Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to go ahead and get started with this meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Want to thank you all for being here and welcome you. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, that's what happens when I don't flip the page. We're going to begin with roll call so that our clerk, Ms. Manriquez, can establish a quorum.
Okay. Supervisor Allen. Supervisor Gano.
Here.
Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Heinz. Chair Scott.
Here.
Let the record show Supervisor Gano is participating remotely. Supervisors Christie and Heinz are not present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Manriquez. And I want to point out in fairness that Supervisor Christie is having some technical difficulties. He should be logging in with us shortly. Supervisor Heinz has indicated that he will not be participating in this meeting. All right, now we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance. This is going to be led by Mr. Ken Walker, who is the interim director of our Grants Management and Innovation Department. Mr. Walker, thank you so much for being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Walker, thank you. Anything you want to share with us about the current work of your department?
Chair Scott and board supervisors members, we're just fighting through it. You know, we have year end right now and talking with all of our departments about how they can get through the next month and the next six months and the years to come. So we're hard at work just making sure that federal and other dollars are coming through when we can.
Given the nature of your job and the work of your department, I am sure fighting through it could be a description of your work in any month of the year, right?
True enough.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. All right, we will now do our land acknowledgement statement, and it is going to be offered by Alicia Vasquez. Alicia is the co-director of Mexican-American Heritage and History Museum, and she is District Five's representative to the Public Art and Community Design Committee. Ms. Vasquez, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from the time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tana'atam Nation, the multi-millennial presence of the Pasquayaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive towards building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Ms. Vasquez, thank you so much. And anything you want to share with the board about the work that you're focused on right now?
Yeah, so this year is the 40th anniversary of it becoming public knowledge that TCE was in fact contaminating the Tucson South Side. And so in partnership with UC Berkeley professor Dr. Sonora Taylor, we are doing a year-long retrospective at looking at that historic groundwater contamination and the community's resistance towards being polluted and actually getting some sort of remediation. And so we're calling this Survival and Resistance, and it is honoring the fact that our communities have been here, will be here, and that water is truly our most important asset that we have, and we can never get it back once it's gone.
Wow. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Ms. Vasquez. Thank you. Okay, we now are going to go to pause for pause, and you are very blessed because we have two meetings a month, and only one meeting a month do they show up in person. And look who's here today.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Katie, and I am the Animal Placement Manager at Pima Animal Care Center, and I am joined today by Sweetie. Sweetie is, as his name describes, a very sweet three-month-old pup who is currently at PAC waiting for adoption. So if you know anyone looking for a very sweet boy, he would love to fill a lap in a home. And he, like so many of our other dogs, did come to us as a stray. PAC right now is preparing for our highest intake week of the year next week as fireworks and monsoon seasons have more pets than ever go missing in our community. So to help our pets at home stay safe, PAC is offering free microchips for Pima County residents as well as collars for their tags every day this week up until the Fourth of July. And we're encouraging community members to keep their pets safe at home, keep pets indoors during fireworks, make sure that you have an up-to-date phone number on their collar, and also check your yard, gates, and fences for anything that could get blown open during monsoons or could be an escape route. And then we do have about 500 dogs in the shelter right now and are looking to make a little extra space as we are anticipating a lot more coming in next week. So we're also offering $5 a day for anyone who can foster a dog over 40 pounds. And we're set a goal for 100 dogs out by the Fourth of July. We have about 53 this morning, and so we'd really love that extra community push. If anybody has a little extra time and some open space in your heart and your home for a dog, we'd love to get those extra ones out by the Fourth of July.
Thank you very much. It doesn't look like Sweetie is a morning dog, so we're sorry that he...
No, he says I'm a little bit of a shy boy, but I just do love those belly rubs and soft little kisses.
All right.
All right, everybody have a safe Fourth of July.
Supervisor Allen, do you want a second dog?
I love her.
All right. Okay, we're going to go back to our clerk, Ms. Manriquez, and she has some agenda adjustments to share with us.
Okay. On the regular agenda, Page 3, Item 10, under County Administrator, this is the update on county initiatives to address homelessness for fiscal year 2526. The county administrator requests this item be removed from the agenda. It will be placed on the July 15th agenda. On Page 10, Item 39, it's a contract under procurement with a new RNG LLC. There's a correction to the contract amount. It should read 4 million estimated revenue. And on the addendum agenda, Page 2, Item 5, this is a contract with Economic Development, the Chamber of Southern Arizona. This item will be heard at a time cern of 10:30 a.m.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manriquez. And before we go to Call to the Public, I am going to be taking a point of personal privilege, and that is because we had somebody in our community who devoted a great deal of service to Pima County pass away recently. And we want to pay tribute to Mr. William O. Wills, Sr., known as Bill Wills, Sr., to many of the folks in our community. And I want to introduce some of Mr. Wills's family who are here with us today. Constance Wills, Regina Wills, Michael Hodge, and Candace Wills-Hodge. And we're going to give them the opportunity to talk about their father and father-in-law later on after I share something about Mr. Wills, who had an extraordinary career. He passed away peacefully in hospice on Thursday, June 26, at the age of 93. He was born and raised in New York City and joined the Air Force in July 1951 and retired from Davis-Monthan as a Master Sergeant in August 1971 with 20 years of service. He and his wife, Martha T. Wills, were married for 72 years, and KOLD News recognized their anniversary back in April of this year. He is the father of three children. One of his children was deceased, is deceased, and several grandchildren and great-grandchildren. In August 1973, he was the first African-American employed as a management assistant to the then Pima County manager's office. In 1977, the county experimented with consolidating 23 departments under five major departments led by what were known at the time as super directors. Today, these directors are known as deputy county administrators. In February 1977, Bill Wills was one of five appointed super directors to oversee the Department of Public Services, which included Public Fiduciary, Public Defender, the Personnel Division, Animal Control Division, Human Resources and Compliance, and the Elections Division. In April 1977, after the board decided not to reorganize, Bill returned as management assistant to the county manager, working on special projects that contributed to the setup of the then Keno Community Hospital, now Banner UMC's South Campus, including the establishment of base data for the fiscal year 1977 to 78 Keno Hospital personnel budget and internal personnel policies. He later accepted an assignment as a Health Department Budget Officer, then was promoted to Assistant Public Health Director for Administrative Services in 1978, where he worked until retirement. In December 1995, Bill Wills, Sr., retired with 22 years of service to Pima County. Throughout his Pima County career, he also served on various boards and committees, including the Pima Council on Aging Board. He was a board member of El Rio Santa Cruz Neighborhood Health Center, PAG's Social Services Planning Committee, and many, many more. Let us, before we call on members of his family, observe a moment of silence in honor Thank you all very much. And would any of Mr. Wills's family like to address the board?
I'd like to thank you all for honoring my father.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. At the beginning, could you state your name for the record?
I'm so sorry. My name is Regina Wills.
Thank you.
I am the oldest, and since they said, well, right now the oldest, my brother was the oldest, they said, since you're the oldest, we defer to you. So if you notice, they all looked my way. I just want to thank everyone and thank the board and everyone for honoring my dad. He was a great man, and I'm really proud of him for everything that he did. And in being the first African-American man on a lot of things, it made me proud to be his daughter. I've been the first, but we won't talk about, we were talking about my dad. I'm just thankful, and I really appreciate each and every one of you. And that's about all I have to say. I'm just choked up with what I'm going to say. I'm about to cry because he was so fabulous. And I just want to let you know, he went peacefully with a beautiful smile on his face. And so I know that he's looking down on us today, and he's so proud of everything that he accomplished in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. And I am also the eldest of four, so I'm familiar with things being punted to you. And I would like to thank our county administrator, Jan Lesher, because she arranged for all the information about your father's many accomplishments to be compiled so that I could read them. Ms. Lesher.
I would just like to thank Lisa Matthews. If Lisa would stand up. Lisa, longtime county employee, made sure that we were good this today, so thank you.
Ms. Matthews, thank you so much for putting all of that together. Really appreciate you. All right. Any other family members want to speak? I think I know the answer, but I'm just going to ask. All right.
I'll speak up.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Constance Wills. I am the youngest daughter of Mr. William Wills, and he really started a tradition with us, working with the county. My sister did. I just retired two years ago from almost a 35-year career with the Pima County Superior Court. So if my dad hadn't have been the man he was, I wouldn't be the woman I am. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you all. I appreciate my friend Lisa. We went to high school together. Go Eagles! Anyway, so Santa Rita was a great school, and I am just so happy to be here to represent my father. And, you know, just let you all know, I'm so, what you read about him was just awesome, spot-on, and he was just a great man, who was a great community man. He was a jokester. He'd always get you. He always had a joke for you, always had something to say about you, whatever. But even until the day he passed, I still saw that in him. Even when he could not speak, I could still see that in him. So I want to just tell you all, thank you. I know he's looking down on us, and he's smiling right now, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for my father. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. All right, and in the spirit of...
I'm connected by phone.
Oh, and it looks like Supervisor Christie has joined the meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Manriquez?
Chair Scott, yes. Supervisor Christie is now present remotely.
Wonderful. All right. And in the spirit of Mr. Wills, who was, as we just heard from his youngest daughter, a bit of a jokester, hate to break this to Mr. DeBonis and Mr. Holmes, but Ms. Lesher has already said, you're not going to be super directors. You have to stay deputy county administrators. Sorry. Not even, yes, as Supervisor Allen said, you don't even get a cape. All right. Thank you all so much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we understand if you don't want to. All right. Okay, we are now going to go to item number six on our agenda, which is Call to the Public. I am going to read our rules and regulations for Call to the Public. Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistling yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair who may direct offenders from the hearing room. And we have two more coming? One more coming? Okay, we have 10 speakers who have filled out cards, and so each speaker will have three minutes. And our first speaker is Vivek Barathan. Sir, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Thank you for remembering. Yes, I appreciate it.
I remember you were here last meeting. Thank you.
That's what I like to talk about. So I'm here to talk about Project Blue and what I observed during the last meeting. And I just want to reiterate that the desert is no place for a water-guzzling, energy-draining, heat-generating monstrosity of a data center. The process essentially was set up to fail us. At that meeting, you only heard from developers. You didn't hear any dissenting opinions. You didn't hear any opinions or facts or expertise on the environmental impacts, the comprehension or the comprehensiveness of the economic assessment. And as a result, this body failed to protect the land that it's been entrusted with. It failed to protect the interest of our residents over the interest of a shell corporation with no stake in the community. Supervisor Christie was saying that, you know, that even if it succeeds here, it will still have to go to city council for annexation. That's passing the buck. You all had the power to stop it, and the three people who voted yes really let us Supervisor Heinz, I was encouraged earlier in the meeting when he talked about wanting to not use an Elon Musk product, which was Starlink, when we were talking about rural connectivity. But he ended up voting yes on something that may end up being XAI, which is also owned by Elon Musk. We don't know. Thank you to Supervisor Allen for your and your team's outreach and research that you did to other parts of the country, to reach out to officials. That meant a lot to me to hear that you had done that background. But it really shouldn't be on a single supervisor and their team to do all of that outreach work, right? That should have been part of the hearing. It seemed like a large part of your decisions to vote yes was based on an economic assessment. But an economic assessment that doesn't include environmental impacts and costs and other costs, that's like a CEO going to a board meeting and celebrating revenue without addressing profits and losses. It's as absurd and incomplete a process. And that's what I observed at the last meeting. I'm deeply disappointed, and I really hope you can correct the process going forward for other development projects so it doesn't play out this way. I feel really let down. I represent a lot of people who are at work right now and couldn't make it. They feel equally let down, and we're really hoping that the city council does the right thing. And with my remaining 20 seconds, there have been three different, four now, different federal developments. One is the ruling on the 14th Amendment. One is the DOJ's, whatever we call it, on stripping naturalized citizens of citizenship. While we've been talking, the Senate just passed the bill, and we need protection from you, and we need the county and the city to publicly vocalize what they're going to do to protect all of us from this federal...
Thank you, Ms. Barathan.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kirk Astroth. And following Mr. Astroth is Robert Royce, and then the Reverend Jessica Braxton.
Good morning. My name's Kirk Astroth. I'm a volunteer with Humane Borders, and I've been doing water drops for 11 years. I'm here to talk about agenda number, item number 23. I'm here to talk about agenda number, item number 23. If you've looked at the Humane Borders death map on our website, you'd see that it includes over 4,300 people who have died out in the deserts west and south of Tucson. Many are never identified, but some are. And along our water route out in Navar Valley is a purple cross that was erected by Alvaro Enciso, a local artist, to pay respects to the remains of Jose Reyes Mendoza, who was 43. He died within feet of the Manville Road two days before Christmas in 2022. And so after, and he died from dehydration and exposure. After traveling untold number of miles on foot, passing the Border Patrol check station at milepost 26 in the Altar Valley, and making it almost all the way to the Silver Bell Mine, he still perished from lack of water. We, as you know, we provide water, a number of permanent water stations out in the desert to prevent deaths. That's our goal. And we don't know anything more about Jose Mendoza. We don't know where he was going. We don't know why he was coming up here. We don't know if he had family somewhere else in the United States. It's likely he did, and it's likely that he was fleeing violence, gang violence in his community, extortion, and political corruption. Humane Borders provides this life-saving water at stations in the desert for everyone, not just migrants. It's for Border Patrol that might find themselves without adequate water. It's for hikers. It's for mountain bikers like me. It's for equestrians. And so it's water for all. So we're asking the county to continue your support for our contract to provide these water stations out in the desert for desperate refugees from political violence. Your support makes a big difference to our nonprofit organization, and it reduces the workload on the Pima County Medical Examiner's Office by preventing deaths. So we're here to publicly express our appreciation. And in case J.D. Vance is listening, I want to make sure I say thank you for your support for all that you've done for the last 25 years, and hope that it will continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Astroth. Mr. Royce?
I'm Robert Royce. Friday marks 249 years since the Declaration of Independence was signed. And I'm going to honor the occasion today with a Jeffersonian reading from the Second Annual Report to Congress dated December 15, 1802, 20 months after his inauguration as president. To the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States, when we assemble together fellow citizens to consider the state of our beloved country, our just attentions are first drawn to those pleasing circumstances which mark the goodness of that being from whose favor they flow, and the large measure of thankfulness we owe for his bounty. Another year has come around and finds us still blessed with peace and friendship abroad, law, order, and religion at home, good affection and harmony with our Indian neighbors, our berths lightened, yet our income sufficient for the public wants. The produce of the year great beyond example. These fellow citizens are the circumstances under which we meet, and we remark with special satisfaction those which under the smiles of providence result from the skill, industry, and order of our citizens, managing their own affairs in their own way and for their own use, unembarrassed by too much regulation, unoppressed by fiscal exertions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royce. Reverend Braxton, followed by JP Salvatiera, and the Reverend Steve Keplinger.
Hello. My name is Reverend Jessica Braxton, and I come to you today as a pastor, a neighbor, and someone whose faith compels me to speak for those whose voices often go unheard. You've heard the statistics, you've read the reports, you've seen the death map from Humane Borders, but let me tell you what statistics can't capture. The ache in the desert air, in the earth, in the whole ecosystem when someone dies alone, thirsty and afraid, just miles from help and roads that they never reached it to. Humane Borders does not make the desert safe for migration. That desert will never be safe. What they do is simple: they make it less deadly. Their blue water barrels are not political statements. They are compassionate ones that affirm the life inside of each living, breathing body on this earth. They stand out against the brown and gold of the Sonoran Desert like hope made visible. They say to every single person, whether they be Border Patrol, migrant, or simply a traveler, that you are seen, your life matters, and you are not alone. As a pastor, I've heard so many stories of those whose lives have been lost, people who left home out of desperation only to vanish into an unforgiving desert. I've prayed at the grave sites of the unidentified with Alvaro Enciso, who identifies these places because of the advocacy work of Humane Borders, places where a simple cross reminds us of a life lived in hope. I preach from the Gospels about the good shepherd who leaves the 99 to search for the one lost sheep, and Humane Borders lives that gospel every single day. This is not about encouraging border crossings. It's about preventing unnecessary death. This is about human dignity. This is about acknowledging the presence of God in all creation as water flows through everything. This is about refusing to let our counties, Pima County's desert, become a silent graveyard while we look the other way. Pima County has been a leader in affirming the value of life. You've recognized in the past that supporting Humane Borders is not just compassionate, it's life-saving, and it's vital public health work. So I ask you today to remind and believe every person that they are a beloved child of God, to renew this partnership, to let Pima County remain a place where compassion has a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Board members, Administrator Lesher, Deputy Attorney, I'm presenting a case on point for reconsideration. Never before has there been such a demonstration of oligarchy's ability to thwart democratic representation than that witnessed in the previous meeting of this board. To its credit, the unseen powers of foreign proxies and brood parasites have shown us the force of their onerous expression on Pima County and the city of Tucson. They take their pound of flesh from the local economy and lavish it upon their stakeholders, and then savor the moment by intimidating our public servants into potential collusion with their plots to disinherit our autonomy. Our trusted supervisors and county administrator are beguiled by half-truths and egregious lack of full disclosure to engage this honored body with their covert intimidation. We, the public, experience complete and utter intentional absence of fully relevant disclosure that compels substantial redress of this data center land sale approval. Complete full disclosure to all concerned aspects of undisclosed contractual liability exposure must be made prior to the board's vote and timely public review. Lack of full contractual disclosure only promotes grossly conflicting views by the board and general public alike. The public's long-term economic, environmental, health, and welfare as municipal bondholders of last recourse are the board's primary obligation. Foreign proxies and special interests don't pay the bills. They pass that debt through to the customers. Forcing an early vote by preempting approval of the data center land sale intentionally misled the board to cast its approval for the sale without prior full and complete disclosure of all aspects of liability exposure. This intentional disingenuous proffering to the board was unlawful and demands redress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Reverend Keplinger. And Reverend Keplinger is followed by Lori Cantio and Dave Smith after Ms. Cantio.
Thank you very much. I'm Steve Keplinger, and everybody says Keplinger, so don't feel bad about that.
Thank you.
I'm a priest in charge at Grace St. Paul's. Over the last 15 years, I've been honored to meet scores of individuals who have risked their lives attempting to cross this unforgiving Sonoran Desert of ours. Adults have shared with me their harrowing journey stories, and their children have described their terrifying nightmares. Some of those folks are here in the U.S. now, raising families and working harder than anyone I know, but most of them I have met are back on the other side of the border. I'm especially haunted by the children and the young women who have experienced more horror in their young lives than I will know in my lifetime. It's difficult to sit with those whose stories are so fresh, who still have the scars of their failed escape. Some of those women could not yet walk, their feet so swollen and distended that they would not even be able to wear sandals. Each has a different poignant story, but there is one thing that they all have in common. When I ask them if they are forever cured of attempting to take on such a hazardous trip again, virtually all of them, even the ones who could not walk, tell me the same thing, that they're going to do it again. Why? Well, I think we know why. The so-called life they are living is beyond our capacity to imagine. According to World Atlas, the 12 most dangerous cities in the world are all in Latin America. It is difficult to believe, but there are even more dangerous places for children right now than Gaza and Iran. There are El Salvador, Guatemala, and Venezuela. Now Honduras ranks in the same category, and it also has become one of the most dangerous places in the world for women. Of course, they will try again because they don't have any other choice. It is an unreasonable and irrational notion to think that we can deter people from attempting to escape their hell by making their journey a worse hell. There is no question that we are living in the most polarized moments in my lifetime, but all of you know that this is not a partisan issue. This is about living into our deepest values. It is unconscionable that we would not do everything we can to protect children and parents who have suffered enough in their lives. I urge you, I beg you, I plead for you to assist Humane Borders in their very simple mission to prevent more deaths from dehydration. Thank you for doing the right thing. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Reverend. Reverend Keplinger.
Good morning. I'm Lori Cantio, and I'm the board chair for Humane Borders. Yesterday, I saw temperatures of 111 degrees here in Tucson. Imagine that you're out in the desert on your own. You have no water, no sense of where you are. Your guide tells you, oh, it's just a 20-minute walk to Phoenix. You'll be fine. They left you behind because you couldn't keep up. You have no cell service. Delirious, you slump under a tree and take your last breath thinking of your family. The Sonoran Desert has claimed yet another life, sadly, someone's father, mother, son or daughter. This happens, on average, every two days in southern Arizona. It's what keeps me up at night. It's why I volunteer as a driver and board member for this organization. Our mission is to prevent this. Humane Borders was founded 25 years ago by a group of faith-based leaders in response to the rising number of migrant deaths, and were powered almost entirely by volunteers and by private donations. We do not receive any federal funding for our work. And while fewer people are coming right now, make no mistake, they are still coming for all the reasons that Reverend Keplinger talked about. Border militarization now is forcing them into even more remote and dangerous areas. Just this year, we've added 45 more deaths to our database. So don't believe the rhetoric that the border is shut. It's not, and it never will be. We can put walls everywhere. They can be cut in three minutes by a cartel member with a saw. Our permitted water stations, as you've heard, keep everyone safer. Yes, they're for migrants, but they're also for hunters and hikers and RVers, all recreationalists. Recently, one of our volunteers was approached by a Border Patrol agent, asking him for water. Of course, our water is for all. It's the one thing that we have in common as humans in these divided times. So I want to thank you all for your courage and your unwavering support of our mission over the years. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Cantio. Mr. Smith. And Mr. Smith is followed by Dr. Anna Greif.
You know, it's ironic, as we listen, I don't know if you guys are oligarchs or not. I can't figure that out. Apparently, they're everywhere. The issue becomes, of course, who is the demos? Who voted for who? Who are you accountable to? And how do we discover whether or not what you're doing is successful or not? I don't see any feedback mechanism. I've been, Supervisor Allen, I've been complaining for several years. We have no cybernetic loop, no feedback, whether or not this $30,000 for this, or a million for that, or several million for another thing, has been successful. We certainly find the emotional urge to do all these things. But the question becomes, was it, what was the efficacy? Was it a deadly nuisance to put, were people being attracted to the desert because there was water or not? It could be a debate. People argue about that. Whether or not the border's secure certainly has an effect on whether or not people are dying in the desert. The desert, it's always going to be hot in Arizona. I was up in Phoenix a few 20-some, let's see, in 1990, and it was 122 degrees, the hottest day ever in Phoenix. I was the training commander up there for DPS, and we skipped our run that day, needless to say. But Arizona's always been hot. It's going to be hot. You see, just the ruins around this state show you how famine and drought has affected the populations. We're in the midst of, our monsoons are about to start. We look forward to the water there. But the question becomes, what's the logical way to truly solve a problem? We can say, this person has a problem in their country. Well, but I don't want those problems brought here. Venezuela's crime rate is down dramatically because they emptied their prisons and gave us the gangsters. You can say what you want, but criminality is normally a trait that is recidivist. It goes over and over again. A criminal continues being a criminal. That's maybe one of the greatest failings in our whole criminal justice system. We haven't figured out how to stop criminality. But my challenge to you is, before you give money to people, before you give money to things, let's do it. Can we at least do what would be a rudimentary high school science paper, where we would say, what is the hypothesis for this money, and what will the result be? And is there a timeline? Is there a feedback mechanism to find out if that process worked, to find out if that program was successful? And you don't see that. I see the homeless. I see, you say, well, the people are still dying in the desert. Then what is the true solution? Is it a secure border? You say, well, the border's not that secure. Well, we're seeing a lot less people coming across. But the question becomes ultimately for you, as the county representatives, as those people who we give our tax money to, how we spend it? How is it accountable? And are you doing it for the welfare of the community, of the true meaning of community, the entire Pima County? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dr. Greif. And Dr. Greif is followed by, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing this correctly, Christine Mokteren. Dr. Greif.
Good morning. Chair Scott, supervisors present and virtual, Administrator Lesher. It is my pleasure to be with you this morning to say thank you for the amazing work that you have allowed us to do in this past year. As you know, our contract is up for renewal in the pocket today, and so I wanted to provide just a brief update, especially since we've got a couple of new supervisors that are not as familiar with the work that we do. We are, before I begin, this is our first year of deeper partnership that we've established with the workforce and community development team. So I do want to thank my counterpart, Dan Sullivan, for an excellent first year of working together. That has gone really, really well. And I did want to mention that the important... And I did want to mention that the importance of the contract that we have with Pima County, because it provides us with seed funding that allows us to do work that goes above and beyond just what’s in our contract today. So for example, this year, we will, the year that just ended yesterday, we served over 500 students. So it’s a bigger number than what’s actually in our contract, and that’s because we’re able to go out and fundraise. As you know, the city is one of our other big supporters, and then we have corporate sponsorships and grants and whatnot that we’re constantly on the lookout for, so that we can scale our impact. And this upcoming year is actually going to be a year where we get a lot more funding from the city. I think the alignment with the Prosperity Initiative has opened up some doors for us there, so right now we have, I think it’s more than $400,000 from the city for this upcoming fiscal year. So I know, Chair Scott, that’s been a concern for a number of years, and I’m just really excited to be able to report that we’ve made some progress there. Yeah. Of course, the investment that the county makes in Job Path does have returns that we measure very diligently every year, and we know that we get about a three-times return on the money in increased taxes that people pay because they’re making more money, and a reduction in the public assistance that they need because they no longer need them. So that’s something that we’re very proud of. We also continue to have around a 90% graduation rate, so our students graduate at a much higher rate than students who don’t receive Job Path support. So it really does make a difference. Our students graduate, and they go on to staff, our hospitals, our doctors’ offices. Of course, we’re a major part of our economic development with supporting the Pima Community College’s Aviation Technology Program. So the impact of the work that we do extends way beyond just supporting students at Pima Community College. It really is community-wide, and we couldn’t do it without the partnership that we have with the county. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Greif.
Hi, I’m Christine Mokterian. I’m a public school teacher here in Pima County. I live in District 1. I am a fourth-generation native born, a U.S. citizen, and I do volunteer with immigrant advocacy organizations and voter registration groups. I’m here today to talk about, a lot of people have talked about immigrants, I want to talk about people who live here in our community, who are very concerned about what happened in Los Angeles recently, with ICE going in and doing raids. There were U.S. citizens who were picked up, who were targeted. There was a tremendous amount of racial profiling. We’re very concerned about the big wasteful bill that might pass. There are billions of dollars there for ICE funding and ICE enforcement. We are short a congressional representative right now due to Raul Grujales passing, so that puts a little bit more of an onus on you all to speak up should something occur. We didn’t like to see masked people with, masked law enforcement with no ID arresting people. We would like for the Pima County Board of Supervisors to make it clear that any inter-agency task force operations would not allow for that. The problem with having a secret police going and rounding people up is that there’s no accountability, and also you can have people impersonating law enforcement and taking advantage of people. And it’s not just undocumented people that fear this. It is also in our community, international students, people with green cards. I’ve even had naturalized citizens tell me they do not want to even go to Nogales, Sonora for a day trip because they don’t know what’s going to happen when they try and cross back in. We also have to think about the economic impact. I attended high school in Oral Valley. We now have large numbers of Canadians who come and spend their Canadian dollars. They golf, they buy homes. What if they don’t come? What if people at the Gem Show don’t feel safe coming, and they’re going to be harassed? We really need for the County Board of Supervisors to speak up and be the voice for the community, even for U.S. citizens who fear this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Isabel Garcia.
Good morning, and thank you so much. First, I want to thank Supervisors Ellen and Kano for their vote last week, for the many reasons that were stated. But today, I’m here as Christina’s, to address you as our local leaders. I’d love to go to DC and be able to talk, right? We’re so removed, and it’s not a great democracy anymore, let’s face it, up in DC. You are it, and we’re living through a really historic moment. I don’t know if you realize it because of where you live and who your neighbors are and what you do, but you do see the TV. We are living horrific moments, abductions. Imagine being abducted by a hooded man. Look, I served Pima County 22 and 1/2 years as the Pima County legal defender, a criminal defense attorney. We fought the county attorney tooth and nail, but I’ll tell you, we had many more rights for people who were fleeing an assault, an aggravated, you know, accident, murders. Murderers have more rights. How can that be in our society? And we’re allowing it. We’re allowing it. It’s a historic moment that I don’t know we thought we’d ever live. I mean, my mom lived right behind Carrillo School, and she was a fourth-generation citizen. And she told me, “It’s the issue of being Mexican. It’s not your papers,” because people try to say, “Well, I’m a citizen, and he doesn’t have papers or whatever.” She lived through those moments, where she was Mexican-American, and it didn’t matter. Immigration laws have been based on the hatred of Mexicans. You know, I can’t tell you, we’re going to come a lot to talk, but you have an obligation. You guys are our leaders that, your agencies contact the immigrant population every day. The family that was harassed at Saint, that was deported from Saint Joseph’s or wherever it was, it was an Axis worker who decided to start inquiring. All of us acting as immigration agents, really, we’re going to deport the taxpayers to fund the billionaires? They are the taxpayers. Look at any study you want. We are the number-one economy, and they’ll tell you why. They admit it on the Wall Street Journal and everywhere else. It tells you, “It’s because of the undocumented labor force.” And this is not a one-off. This has been since the early 1900s, sir.
Ms. Garcia, please remember to address the board.
Yes, I’m sorry. When we decided that we needed cheap labor, and we lynched immigrants, and we’re not going back, and you have to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma’am. All right. There being no further speakers, I’m going to close call to the public and ask my colleagues if they would like to ask staff to follow up on any of the items raised with us, if they would like an item put on a future agenda, or to respond to criticism. Hearing nothing, I have two things, Ms. Lesher. First of all, I’m going to move after call to the public to item number 23, since we have so many folks from Humane Borders here. But I wanted to ask if you could follow up with the board in terms of what other support the county provides to Humane Borders and its mission. Perhaps you or someone you designate could have a conversation with Ms. Cantio and her leadership team. I’d appreciate knowing beyond what we’re going to be considering today, what the county is doing to support Humane Borders over the last 25 years. And then the second item was just raised by Ms. Mokterian and Ms. Garcia. We got from the county attorney some direction on how county departments were supposed to respond if we were approached by any federal immigration officials. I wonder if we could get any updates on where things stand now, given the more aggressive posture of federal authorities in our area, and especially any concerns about inter-agency cooperation that we’ve heard today. Thank you very much. All right. So because we have some folks in the audience for different items, I’m going to cover those items, because we have a timed certain item at 10:30, but I think we can get through some of these other items where there are people here interested in what we have on our agenda. And after I get through the items that I know about, I’m going to ask if there are folks in the audience who are here for items that perhaps I don’t have on my list. So the first item I’m going to go to is item number 23, and that is, pardon me while I flip to the right page. As I said, that is the Humane Borders item. It is Humane Borders Incorporated Amendment Number 2 to Provide for Water Distribution Services in the Remote Areas of Pima County. Extend contract term to June 30/26 and amend contractual language. Contract amount $30,000. I will move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. And Supervisor Kano and Supervisor Christie, if you want to be recognized for any item today, just raise your hand. I do not see Supervisor Christie on camera, but I do see Supervisor Kano. All right, so I’m going to call on Supervisor-
I’m via phone, Mr. Chair.
Pardon me, sir?
I’m via phone.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Supervisor. Then if you would just interrupt any time you want to speak to either item, thank you for letting me know that. All right, Supervisor Allen.
I am excited to have the opportunity to further provide support to Humane Borders this year, as we have for previous years. Pima County is a border county. In fact, we have one of the largest county, one of the largest stretches of shared border with our largest trading partner, with Mexico. 130 miles of Pima County is shared with Mexico. And so we understand, or we should understand, I think, as a region, the importance of that relationship, the interconnectedness amongst our communities, and understanding that we are inextricably linked. The crisis that we have witnessed, endured along the border since, you know, for hundreds of years, but more recently since 1994, right? With the outset of Operation Gatekeeper, strategies of deterrence and trying to make our border as difficult as possible for people to cross, is a failed strategy. It was then, and it has continued every single year since then, with every single lost life. It is a constant reminder that we need to both stand up, and we need to protect life, and we need to denounce failed policies, because they affect all of us in myriad ways. Our relationships with Mexico, they affect our families, they affect our economy, they affect our communities, on and on and on, in countless ways, and they could be prevented. We understand the causes of migration. We understand the violence. We understand the brutality that compels people to come here. Putting out barrels of water is not enough to convince people to leave everyone that they know, their homelands, their families, their communities, their language behind. So this idea that water is driving people here is an absolute fallacy. So I support the efforts of Humane Borders. I am proud that across District 3, that there are volunteers who fuel Humane Borders, from Ajo and everywhere in between, from Tucson and around. The effort of saving lives and recognizing the importance of that is something that I am proud to support, from the Samaritans to Ajo folks and on. So all that is to say, thank you for your work. I appreciate your leadership, your vigilance, and your commitment to human life.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisors Kano or Christie, would you like to address this item? Okay. I wanted to say, my team and I got an email from Ms. Lesher just a few days ago inviting us to presentations that the Pima County Medical Examiner is giving about deaths in the desert. And Dr. Hess, by the nature of the work that he does and where he does it, is an expert on deaths in the desert. And some of our speakers today addressed what they have seen and what they have experienced. And Dr. Hess, obviously, can tell his share of horrendous stories as well. I’m very proud to support this item, as I have every year since I came on the board. I think it’s always been the same amount, and I’m glad that Ms. Lesher is going to let the board know what else the county is doing or can be doing to support the work of Humane Borders. And I very much appreciate the comments from my colleague from District 3, who has been involved in making sure that people in our borderlands are treated with dignity and respect for many years, long before her service on the board. And thank you, Supervisor Allen. So let’s move to a vote on this item. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Item passes 3 to 1, with Supervisor Christie opposed. Thank you all very much. We’re now going to move to item number 18, and we heard Dr. Greif address this item during call to the public. This is Job Path Incorporated Amendment Number 2 to Provide for Workforce Development Services and Job Training Assistance. Extend the contract term to June 30/26, amend contractual language and scope of services, contract amount $600,000. I’ll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Christie.
Thank you. Looking at the background that shows the performance metrics, particularly Exhibit C, it speaks to a number of percentages, employed second quarter, employed fourth quarter, after exit, measurable skill gains, and goes on, probably, there’s, I’d say, the vast majority of the indexes that are presented to us are of a percentage nature, yet Job Path is saying that those individuals, the amount of individuals that are involved and are benefiting from this equals somewhere around 250 individuals. I’m wondering, where are those 250 in the performance measures? They show percentages, for instance, employed second quarter after exit, 68.5% of what? Of 10 people, 5 people, 30 people? Again, they refer to the 250 individuals that are involved in this, but they certainly don’t utilize that type of index to just to show how many people are being dealt with in these instances, even though they use the term 250 people in their background are being involved with. So there’s nothing in the background that indicates how many people completed the program, and even though it says at least 250 individuals over the one-year contract, but they use percentages. And I’m just kind of troubled that we don’t know what those percentages represent in the amount of people going through the program.
Thank you, Supervisor Christie. And Ms. Lesher has asked Mr. Sullivan, the Director of our Community and Workforce Development Department, to come forward to address your concerns. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Supervisor Christie. In this contract, we tried to align as much as possible between the performance measures that are in our Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act grants. So that’s where you see percentages of people who have completed a training program, people who are employed second and fourth quarter after exit, and that performance measure applies to the 250 people who are covered under this contract. So, you know, there-
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, is the 68.5% of those- Mr. Chair, just to be clear, is the 68.5% of those employed the second quarter after the exit, is that the 68% of the 250?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. You might want to take a look at the performance measures for clarity on that level, but thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Kano, thank you for using the hand thingamajig.
I'm going to call it a thingamajig the rest of the morning, Chair Scott. I want to thank Job Path for all of their incredible work in our community, and I would like to call a question.
All right. Supervisor Kano has called the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes four zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan and Dr. Greif. All right, we're going to move now, kind of hopscotching around our agenda, to item number 31. This is DM 50 Amendment Number One to provide for Davis-Monthan Air Force Base Advocate Economic Development Activities. Extend contract term to June 30/26. Contract amount $50,000. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I'd just like to commend DM 50 for their consistent and long-term work cultivating the, probably one of the biggest assets that Pima County has, and as well as encouraging economic development activities through their mission. I've attended a number of their events and their meetings, and it's truly gratifying to see so many people in the community and members of DM 50 who are really passionate about engaging with the Davis-Monthan Air Force Base residents and the enlisted people and all of the plans and the programs that they've obtained over the years, everything from Christmas parties to supplying materials for the many community activities that the base provides for its residents. It's just a terrific organization, passionate people that really do a terrific job of shepherding and nurturing one of our biggest economic development assets in the Pima County. And I'm proud to offer my support in a positive vote for their continued funding. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. The item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes four zero. Thank you, sir. All right, we're now going to move to the addendum, to item number four. This is Meet and Confer Memorandum of Understanding. Staff recommends approval to extend the memorandum of understanding with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees through September 30 of this year. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Ms. Lesher, anything that staff wanted to share with the board about the reason this is on the addendum?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have convened or have identified the members of the Meet and Confer Committee, and they will be meeting and coming back with an amended agreement ASAP, but we want to make sure that there is an MOU remains in place until we come back to you with a completed agreement, and we believe we can do that within the next 90 days. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lesher.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, just a question. This expires, I think it was either today or yesterday. Why are we, why, what's the reason for extending it for 30 days?
Administrator-
It should be for three months.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Christie, the committee has just been convened with representatives of both the county and AFSMI, and they will be leading into the conversations that will bring an amended or a new MOU back to the board. But they have asked for, and both sides of this have asked for, the 90 days to continue those conversations. We want to extend the current MOU so that one remains in place prior to the approval of the new agreement.
So, Mr. Chair, Ms. Lesher, is it corrected assuming that they haven't come to any agreement and really need more time to work through certain items in order to continue with this memorandum, and that's the cause for the three-month extension?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, no, I believe that there was, we have just received the, all the names of the individuals who will be participating. I don't believe that there's, I'm not sure there's even been an initial meeting, there may have been one, but there is no, at this point, belief or any concerns or that there will be any disagreements. It's simply convening and getting the committee to meet over the next 90 days.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lesher.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Christie. Any other discussion amongst board members? Right, all those in favor of the item indicate by saying aye.
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 Item passes four zero. We're now going to go to hearings, and the first hearing that we're going to go to is number 55. This is a conditional use permit. Day et al. on East Saguaro Road, Darrell Rodney Day, represented by James McMurtry. And we do have a speaker. I beg your pardon? Okay, we do have Mr. McMurtry here, but for questions only, if board members have questions. And we have no other speaker cards. So knowing that, I will move to close the public hearing and recommend approval subject to standard and special conditions.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie, because this is in District Four. And I see that Supervisor Kano would like to make some comments or has questions. Supervisor Kano? No, because the hand thing was on.
My apologies.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions from board members? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll now go to staying on hearings. This is hearing number... Sir, were you here for a particular item? No, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Let's then go to item number 53. This is a hearing for a rezoning time extension. Unisource Energy Corporation on North LaToya Boulevard rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the five-year time extension, five-year time extension subject to original and modified standard and special conditions. Did you fill out a speaker card, sir? Or did you want to speak? You are welcome to if you would like to. Okay.
I would.
Okay, you can fill out the card after you're done speaking. If you just want to come forward and state your name, and then you'll have up to three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
My name is Michael Baird, one of the owners of the property. As I stated in my time extension form, we bought the property right before COVID, and we were looking at doing a commercial restaurant center with some seating on the loop. And COVID kind of killed that, and then interest rates went through the roof as far as getting a loan. So, but we've rethought our development ideas. We're going to, looking at more multifamily development on that piece of property. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Seeing, and young lady in front of you will take your speaker card when you're done with it, but seeing that we have no other speakers for this item, I will move to close the public hearing and approve the five-year time extension subject to original and modified standard and special conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion from board members. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Are you voting in opposition, Supervisor Kano?
No, I can't figure out the technology. My apologies once more. I vote aye.
All right. And Supervisor Christie, did you vote aye? Do we still have him?
Perhaps the technology is bothering me, too. I had my mute on. I'm sorry. Yes.
All right, thank you, Supervisor.
I am voting in favor.
All right, item 53 passes four zero. Thank you for your time, sir. Please share your speaker card with our staff member there. All right, now we will move to item number 56. This is a hearing on a building code text amendment, building and construction update. We do have a speaker, Mr. Brendan Lyons. Mr. Lyons.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for having me. I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, and I just want to express our gratefulness for being included as stakeholders. And in particular, above and beyond this, the building codes, I would like to acknowledge Dan Ice for his consummate professionalism, for going above and beyond to reach out to stakeholders, to be included in our tech committee meetings, to making himself always available. I just want to take that moment to share that. Since our last, we also support delaying the IECC. We realize that this will add $3,000 per home in construction costs. And not only do we support delaying this, we'd ask your consideration for foregoing it altogether. Since our last testimony before the Joint Code Committee, two items do remain a concern. We recommend that you not adopt amendments to sections E3901.4. This has to do with countertop and work surface receptacles, as well as E4002.11, receptacles near bathtubs and showers. Both are, we believe that both are unnecessary and an inconvenience to homeowners. These items should remain optional. We recommend that the board direct staff to continue to work with stakeholders to mitigate further cost impacts as well. Thank you for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from-
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lyons, so in essence, are you asking that those items you mentioned be removed from this amendment completely and the rest accepted and passed by the board? Or are you asking that this whole amendment, building code text amendment as is presented, be continued for further discussion on the entire package itself? Or what's the direction you're looking for again?
I understand. So the direction is to remove those two items specifically, and if there is an opportunity to address future added concerns over costs, that that be considered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Ms. Lesher or anybody she chooses to designate to respond to this request. The board did get written communication from the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association this morning with regard to that request. Ms. Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Scott. And I will ask staff to speak to this. The issue, as I understand it, really deals with receptacles. Previously, the code has allowed those, the outlets, the receptacles to be on the side of countertops, islands, and now it would be at the top. The amendments that we are bringing forward today are consistent with those adopted by the city. I think the concern has simply been years of whether or not the access of children and such to pull the cords out, have the frier land on their head. And I believe that what we've been looking at is simply a unanimous recommendation of the group to make this consistent with the national codes and the city. Mr. DeBonis, Mr. Ice, and others, Mr. Gerschaff.
So Chair Scott, as Ms. Lesher indicated, those are the reasons why. So the current provisions on outlet placement were recommended by the Code Committee. They were adopted by the City of Tucson. Staff's recommendation is that we remain consistent across our jurisdictions and incorporate that. To the point about the International Electric Conservation Code, that has been recommended by staff not to be adopted at this time. So that request from Saba has already been accommodated within the recommendation in front of you today.
Thank you, Mr. DeBonis. Supervisor Kano, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair Scott. I'd actually like to motion to close the public hearing and approve the item and resolution number 15.
I think it's ordinance number 2025-15, sir?
2025-15 is recommended by staff. Thank you, Chair Scott.
All right, I will second. Discussion on that motion to close the public hearing and adopt, pass and adopt ordinance number 2025-15.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes, just to be clear, that the motion is to accept the entire code text amendment as presented, including the items that the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association are requesting that they not be adopted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And Chair Scott, if I may, I just want to reiterate that uniformity is really key, and the fact that the City of Tucson has already adopted the same code and specific codes that the home builders have in question. It would not be prudent for the county to have a different set of rules, in my opinion. And I'm sorry, I will not be able to support Saba's request today.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Southern Arizona Home Builders Association has been around for decades, and I think they're quite experienced in all of the iterations of the amendment over the years. And I think that when they are asking for something not to be adopted, I think there's valid reason. And to follow the City of Tucson is not a justifiable entity or a movement just because the City of Tucson is doing it. I'm certain there are justifiable reasons and that they make sense. And with their long history in construction of dozens and dozens of home builders, I think they know what they're talking about. So I will not be supporting the amendment as presented unless those items are deleted, which by that motion, they are not going to be.
Thank you, Supervisor. And Mr. DeBonis has asked to be recognized. Mr. DeBonis.
Chair Scott, thank you. I just want to clarify. So there were two parts to the request by the Southern Arizona Home Builders. One is to not adopt the International Energy Conservation Code. That is not being recommended by staff. So that request of Saba has already been accommodated in the staff recommendation and was consistent with what was adopted by the City of Tucson. So that portion of Saba's request is already being accommodated. The second request that they're making has to do with the provisions related to outlet placement. And for that one, staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt that. And that recommendation is consistent with the Joint City-City Building Code Committee, who deliberated and debated that, and the City of Tucson, who adopted that recommendation from the Code Committee. So hopefully that clarifies.
Mr. DeBonis, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I believe the hearing has been closed, but is it possible for Mr. Lyons to address the comments that Administrator DeBonis just made?
I, we would have to reopen the public hearing, Supervisor Christie.
I so move.
I'll second. All those in favor of reopening the public hearing indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've reopened the public hearing. Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, yes, what County Deputy Administrator DeBonis has shared is accurate. The request to forego the IECC code at this time, as recommended, is accurate, as well as foregoing- as foregoing it in the future altogether. The additional two items remain, we highly believe upon deliberation and consultation with even the National Association of Home Builders, believe that the two additional receptacles be removed to be optional, but that is the board's prerogative.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. We're going to take up, Mr. Sabatiera, are you wishing to speak during the hearing?
Yes, I do.
Please, go ahead.
I'd like to request that some kind of a clarification be made in regard to whether these changes, whether they're adopted or not into that uniform code, address the Americans with Disabilities Act, and possibly, aside from the precaution for children, that this may be a mobility issue that some people need to have to access, adults with disabilities need to have access to those receptacles. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right. We're going to...
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Kano.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I'd like to move to close the public hearing and approve ordinance number 2025-15 as recommended by staff.
And again, I will second that. But Supervisor Christie, are you speaking to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Go ahead, please.
The substitute motion is that this entire addendum item be continued until the next meeting in August for further discussion and clarification on these items, and that they be properly explained and vetted to the supervisor. So there's clarity on exactly which items we're discussing, and give an opportunity for perhaps some kind of collaboration or moving together between staff and the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association to come to a resolution. So my motion is to continue until the first meeting in August.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, that motion dies for lack of a second. We're now going to take up Supervisor Kano's motion to close the hearing and adopt ordinance number 2025-15. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed.
Can I make one little explanation of my vote?
Yes, she may Supervisor Allen, go ahead, please.
You know, I just want to make sure that it is known that Saba has a seat on our Joint Code Committee, right? And so, and the code committee recommended this amendment, right? And so, I mean, I feel like these issues have had a venue in which to be discussed. And so I feel confident with the recommendation that came forward from staff and from the committee. So it is, I don't feel like we needed necessarily more time to discuss it and probe it more and for us to understand it. Our staff sat down with staff to try to understand it and dig into it more, and appreciated that time.
Thank you Supervisor. We do have a time certain item at 10:30, but I want to also cover hearing number 57. This is code text amendment impact fee ordinance, ordinance number 2025-16. And my understanding is that not only does Mr. Lyons wish to speak to this item, but that we also have a slide presentation from staff. All right, Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you once again for the opportunity to speak this morning and for your continued leadership on matters that shape the future of our community. I'm here, once again, on behalf of Southern Arizona Home Builders. I want to begin by expressing also our sincere appreciation for the professionalism and responsive manner in which county staff have engaged us throughout this process. We recognize the importance of planning for infrastructure needs that come with growth and support the county's efforts to ensure a strong resilient foundation in our future. At the same time, we also know that the housing affordability remains a keen concern for many in our region. With that in mind, we respectfully ask the board to consider a five-year phase-in of the proposed development impact fee increases. We believe a gradual approach would support a smoother transition, provide predictability for the housing market, and help balance infrastructure goals with the shared priority of keeping housing accessible for working families. We value the partnership we've built with the county and look forward to continued collaboration on solutions that advance our region's housing needs. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisors, any questions for Mr. Lyons?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Mr. Lyons, so what you're stating is that you are supportive of this code text amendment on the impact fees?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. Administrator Lesher.
Chair Scott, thank you. And I, members of the board, just wanted to make sure you were aware that our recommendation does include a five-year phase-in fee that we have been working with. Saba appreciate their input, and that all of the new fees begin to be effective in October, but it is a five-year phase-in as requested. That is in the material before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry Supervisor Allen, were you wanting to ask Mr. Lyons a question?
It was actually just on that specific point, that I thought that we had already incorporated the five-year phase-in.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor. All right. Seeing no other speakers, I'm going to move, oh wait, no, I'm sorry, we have a slide presentation. My apologies. And I believe Ms. Skinner, the Director of our Transportation Department, is here to go over those slides. Ms. Skinner.
Thank you, Chair Scott, members of the board. The slide presentation is largely similar to what you've seen the last three visits. So if you'd like to just ask questions, we can do that. Slide five and six show that five-year phase-in, which is what the department has recommended. So I really leave it to you whether you would like me to go slide by slide.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Any questions for Ms. Skinner about the item before us? Seeing and hearing none, and we can take the, if you can take the slides down, just because I can't see Supervisors Kano and Christie when they're up. Thank you. All right. Supervisors Kano or Christie, did you have questions for Ms. Skinner? All right.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor. Hearing none, I move that we close the public hearing and recommend approval of the Streets Facility Development Fee Study and the phase-in schedule as presented by staff.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. What was that Ms. Menriches? Thank you. And also ordinance number 2020-27. Thank you, Ms. Menriches. Is that amendment okay with you Supervisor Allen?
Indeed, it is.
Thank you. All right.
Chair Scott.
Yes.
Just to clarify, it's ordinance 2025-16.
Oh, my bad, I'm sorry, we're amending 2020-27. So, but it's ordinance number 2025-16. That's still okay with you, right?
It's still.
Okay. All right. All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Item passes 4-0. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, all right. The clerk is letting me know that we do have another member of the public here for another hearing, and we're going to take care of that before we move to our time certain item. This is item number 54. This is a hearing on a conditional use permit, Noble Wolf Enterprises off of Sonoyta Highway. And we have Mr. Colton Noble here to address the board. Mr. Noble.
Thank you Supervisors. I just wanted to take a moment and thank Supervisor Christie for facilitating a meeting with the Planning Department. Going through this conditional use permit process has taken about a year, year and a half. And we went through, and I think this is one of the best ways government works, is by working with the people. And I think I had that opportunity here. So thank you Supervisor Christie, and I'd also like to just give a shout out to the Planning Department for working with me. I think Mr. Rogowski's not in the room, but if he's here, I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate the stick in it with me on this.
Thank you, Mr. Noble.
Also available if questions come up on this.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Noble from Supervisors? Supervisor Christie, would you like to make the motion?
I would be honored. I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing be closed, and that the board approve P25CU00005, Noble Wolf Enterprises LLC, South Sonoyta Highway, and grant a type-two conditional use permit, and follow the hearing administrator recommending, recommendations of approval subject to standard and special conditions.
Thank you Supervisor. I will second that. Discussion from board members. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Noble. Thank you Supervisor Christie. All right.
Thank you.
We are now going to move to our time certain item. This is addendum item number five, the Chamber of Southern Arizona Incorporated to provide economic development support services for Pima County in Southern Arizona, general fund contract amount $550,000. Want to point out that not only is staff available to answer questions, we have, of course, Ms. Lesher and Mr. Debonus, but we also have Mr. Viscovi Kiori. I just wanted Supervisors Kano and Christie to know which staff members were here. And we also have from the Chamber of Southern Arizona, Mr. Snell, Ms. Rich, and Mr. McCusker, who can answer questions from board members. Ms. Lesher, any initial comments or presentation from staff on the recommendation?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, what you have before you today is just a continuation with slightly adjusted scope of work to enhance the specifics required over the upcoming year. Those have all been noted, whatever's been updated has been noted in a memorandum of the 27th, just explaining how we continue to work with Sun Corridor, and it has recommended the continued level of funding for the next fiscal year. But as you note, staff is happy to answer any specific questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to comments, questions from board members, and they can be directed at staff, they can also be directed at our guests from the Chamber of Southern Arizona.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about this merger of the two entities at this particular time, and I'm supportive of their request. One question I must ask, because it's been posed to me by several chambers that are in Pima County, two of which are in my district, will this, do you think, invite the other chambers to ask the county for financial support? And I think that maybe Ms. Lesher could address that.
Administrator Lesher.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Christie, we do support the AHO chamber at this point in time. So I know that it is, any, chambers may come forward and ask for consideration, and that will be up to the policy direction of the board. But given the unique nature of the AHO chamber, they have come to the board and received funding. That's the only chamber that has approached us directly. My hope is with the consolidated organization, that there's a recognition that we continue to support the economic development opportunity that is really the lead of the Chamber of Southern Arizona, and not the advocacy portion that is the chamber.
Thank you.
Any other questions Supervisor Christie?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Kano, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair Scott. My question is for Administrator Lesher. Administrator Lesher, can you give us an overview on how this amount was decided, $550,000? Can you also tell us what other jurisdictions are paying into the Chamber of Southern Arizona? It's my understanding that the city of Tucson has an annual contribution that is much less than the $550,000 that we are providing.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Supervisor Kano, and I will look to others to help me with this number, and particularly the Sun Corridor. I believe that the city of Tucson is $50,000?
Board dues.
Board dues at $50,000. There, which, again, I think, the distinction that was just made, if you couldn't hear it Supervisor Kano, from Mr. Snell, from the chamber, is that the city of Tucson pays board dues, as do, I believe, other jurisdictions. The county has been unique and a slightly different partner from the get-go as the regional partner, and we have seen ourselves, and if you look at the amended scope going into this, all the communication from Sun Corridor, my apologies, it's going to be a while, from the Chamber of Southern Arizona goes not only to Pima County, but for us to work with the region. We came in at a larger level from day one because of what we believe to be the regional responsibility we have as the county. We work with the economic development officers of all the jurisdictions and other partners as well. So it is that, the historic participation negotiated up to 10 years ago with the county that has led for the difference. We don't just pay the board dues, we have a regional responsibility. Mr. Debonus or Mr. Viscovi Kiori, is, are there additional comments you'd like to make? Nope. Good. Good. Thank you. Supervisor Kano, did that answer your question, sir?
Thank you, it does, and I have one more, if Chair Scott will permit it.
Please, go ahead.
I want to thank Administrator Lesher, the additional information that you sent our way yesterday in response to some questions. Now, I am concerned that with this $550,000 contract that was approved by the board last year, that in quarters one, two, and three, the chamber submitted to the county only 23 jobs created for that $550,000. Members of the public ought to hold Pima County to the same high standards that we hold both the public and the private sector to, and I am pleased Administrator Lesher that there's been some number crunching in the quarter four report to indicate that the chamber is in fact creating more than 23 jobs in one year. But I do have to say, it is unsettling that theevd two memos with zero activity on the job front, Administrator Lesher. And so I'm curious what additional guardrails we would like to continue having with the chamber as they merge into this new and empowering entity that I know has lots of potential.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Supervisor Kano, I think we have looked at a variety of ways in which we communicate with the chamber and report to the board in additional scope of work and amendments in the upcoming contract. I can tell you that our economic development staff and Deputy County Administrator Debonus meet regularly with representatives of the chamber, and I think the most significant relationship we have comes through your Chair, Chair Scott, who serves not only on the board but on the executive committee for the chamber. And I think that day-to-day participation in the operations will allow us to continue to monitor and to tweak whatever might need be in terms of how we receive the reports and the updates on progress from the organization. I can tell you sometimes the amount of work and the energy that goes into the hopes to bring a new company into the community, it can take a while to see those, see the return on that initial investment. And I think that's what we've seen historically. It can be several quarters, if not a year, before we see the actual numbers come in that report on those jobs. The rest of the time, I think what you see is the ongoing relationship that exists between our staffs, working together on behalf of the region. But there are others in the room who are the experts and can easily speak to that in terms of why I was less concerned about the zero. in terms of why I was less concerned about the zero for some quarters, as long as I know that there are things that remain in the pipeline and that there is ongoing work that occurs every day to make sure that we are continuing to look at what I believe is the critical mission, which is to increase the per capita income of every individual who resides in Pima County.
Any follow-up Supervisor?
No, thank you Chair Scott.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Kano. Any of our guests, would you like to respond to the question, provide some additional information for the Board?
I have other questions Chair Scott.
Supervisor Scott, members of the Board, Administrator Lesher, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Joe Snell, and I'm the President of Sun, the Chamber of Southern Arizona. I almost did it Jan the same way. It's going to take a while. Real briefly, we have some key players with me here today. I have Fletcher McCusker, who's the Treasurer of our organization, and Judy Rich, who's the immediate past Chair of the organization. I will just say from initial comments, I really do appreciate this partnership that goes back a long time, 20 years. The county was a founding member of this organization, one of the few groups that helped found it. And we've done some significant things over the last 20 years. You know, over 200 companies brought into this market, 60,000 jobs created, which, you know, a lot of times those numbers get lost. What does that mean? Well, that means people going to work, and that's really important. I'd stress a couple of things. Our efforts are additive to the county's economic development efforts. We don't compete, we don't have duplicate services. You know, not one industry sector can do everything, and we represent a very large diverse group of leaders across multiple industries, whether that be government, industry, business, small business, large business, academic sectors, both the U of A, Pima Community College, and we do that all under one roof. So, we're very much of a convener of those drivers. And about 90% of all employment is represented in, really, in the halls of this organization. And we think that's very important, that we have that kind of diversity as we try to solve our biggest problems. Anyway, I won't go on. I would say that yes, to Supervisor Kano's question, you know, the jobs don't line up linear all the time. And we have a very strong fourth quarter with several companies. I'll be honest, it's just taken longer this year. We forecasted some announcements earlier, but in a presidential election year, things tend to get a little wonky where companies hold back. And then, I'll be frank, some of the policies coming out from the federal government with tariffs have really stalled some things. So, I think we're on a better pace looking forward to next year, and we were thrilled by it. I'm going to shut up and ask Fletcher McCusker to say a couple of words as our Treasurer. Thank you Fletcher.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen, when you're done, please stay up here, because I know Supervisor Allen also has some questions.
Sure.
Mr. McCusker.
Chairman Scott, members of the Board, I think you know me. I'm new as the Treasurer of the Chamber, I like to call it, kind of like the Ohio State. You refer to it as the Chamber of Southern Arizona, but I'm honored to be an officer. I think I bring something to this Board as it merges that concern you, and frankly, I have a very strong history as both a public company CEO and the Chairman of Regional Level around transparency and conversations about government funds. Couple of things that address Supervisor Kano and Christie's question. The money we receive from you does not go to salaries or travel or our regular operational expenses. It's used almost exclusively for marketing. Who do we market to? Well, we market to site selectors. If you're not familiar with the site selector world, it's a very competitive environment. Companies like Caterpillar and others that we've been a participant in select consultants to identify targeted cities, and we compete for their attention. So, your $550,000 almost goes exclusively to marketing to and hosting those kind of people. I think we can do a better job showing you where that money goes, and we're certainly not opposed to a quarterly report that can identify to the dollar what kind of expenditures we're making on behalf of the region. To Steve's point and to Jan's point, you're the only government partner that we have. You're the only government partner we choose to have, because the city jurisdictions tend to be very parochial if they want to contract within their own geography. You represent the region. We represent the region. Our goals, we believe, are therefore aligned, and we do more with you than just give you a Board seat. We tend to work together to identify and recruit companies that matter. The other thing that we provide that I know is a challenge for you, and it's an agenda item today, we do it confidentially. We do it without disclosing the company. They choose to work with cities anonymously. It's, in fact, demanded of us. Caterpillar is a great example. Caterpillar was codenamed. They did not want their employees to know that they were moving their company. Each company has a different reason of why they don't want it to disclose. The most recent project, a lot of things that identify them, they didn't want disclosed to their competitors. We can operate under an NDA on your behalf, and we are approached weekly, daily, with companies that are inbound, that will not come to a government jurisdiction for fear that their identity cannot be protected. $550,000 is one-seventh of our new budget. I've only been at the Chamber for a few weeks, but I can tell you that we've integrated both the budget of the former Chamber and the budget of Sun Corridor. Now, this $550,000, which is our only outside government contract, represents one-seventh of our budget. The seven X times your budget all comes from the private sector. It comes from the attraction side, which is the former Sun Corridor. Those are executives of companies who want to be passionate about how we recruit. Not only do we pay a significant amount of dues, but we participate hours and hours of our time to recruit, entertain, visit with, tour inbound executives who only go through other CEOs. You have to remember, our network is this community's 70 best CEO Board members. By combining with the Chamber, we now represent over 1,000 small businesses that are going to be equally attractive, we believe, in the supply chain. Our budget is balanced for this year. It's a break-even budget. Every dollar that comes into this organization is going out. There's no room for reserve. We've had to combine two organizations, two offices. Again, all of your money goes to marketing. Any reductions in that, the only thing that's going to hurt is our ability to market the region. And I think it's incumbent on all of us, particularly post Project Blue. When the identity of that company gets announced, Tucson is going to be on everybody's radar in the world. We do not want to, at this time and place, diminish our ability to respond to them. We have an unbelievable pipeline. I think it was shared with you in the most recent report. We can share it with you every quarter if you want. But what they're facing is this unbelievable activity, and to Supervisor Kano's point, our jobs come in spurts. Over the 20 years that we've been involved, we've created 60,000 new jobs. 60,000 jobs. But they come in spurts. There will be quarters where there's a zero. There could be two or three, or maybe a year where there's zero. It doesn't mean we're not working behind the scenes to attract those companies. So, we urge you to continue this at the current level per SaaS recommendation. There's anything we can do to be more accountable to you, to be more transparent to you, to share with you on a regular basis where this money is going. Right now, we talk about where it isn't going. It'd be very easy for me to provide a report to you that shows you to the penny where this money has gone. And we're available for questions. I think Judy wanted to close.
Thank you, Mr. McCusker.
Supervisor Scott, members of the Board and staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to speak about an organization that I think very highly of. As a person who had the privilege to be the Chair of this organization for three years and work with the people who are still there, because we don't have a lot of turnover, and now with this great opportunity with the Chamber, I believe that this organization has integrity. I've heard a lot of numbers, I'm not going to repeat one of them, but to tell you that the integrity and the transparency of this organization is something I believe in, and I have seen the effectiveness. So, I just add my voice to those of Joe and Fletcher to say that we appreciate the opportunity to be here and appreciate your support.
Thank you Ms. Rich. And I know that Supervisor Allen had some questions, perhaps for you, but perhaps also for staff. Supervisor Allen.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you for being here. I am looking at the Prosperity Initiative, right, which is just a cornerstone of our vision for Pima County and how we build prosperity across the region. And so, there are four goals within the Prosperity Initiative that relate to economic development and sort of raising all ships in our community. So, one, if you'll bear with me, I'll read through them. So, one is prioritizing workforce development for low-income job seekers. And it's, anyway, I won't read you the detail of it. The second is improving job quality for workers, which is improving, da-da-da, expanding employment capacity of employers already offering quality jobs, with quality jobs defined as those that provide competitive, equitable, and self-sustaining wages, family-friendly benefits and practices, and consistent scheduling. The third is improving financial capability. Improve the financial capability of low-income families, small businesses, to increase their access to fair credit and to gain and protect income and wealth-building assets. And then, the fourth is increasing small or micro-business ownership and expansion opportunities. So, increasing ownerships, expansion opportunities, prioritizing entrepreneurs of color, women-owned businesses, and businesses operating in high-poverty neighborhoods. So, I read through the contract, spent some time on the Thrive in Tucson website, and I'm interested in learning more about how our goals align, those four goals within the Prosperity Initiative, and there's other goals, right, obviously, but how those align and how we would work together to accomplish those.
Thank you for that. The merger will enable that substantially more than the Sun Corridor as a standalone agency. Our business historically has been attraction. We react to people that are interested in coming here. They are typically very large companies. They are competitive. With Caterpillar, we competed with Denver. So, that focus is on the Fortune 50 or the Fortune 100. Generally, we've had very little to do with small business, small business empowerment, small business diversity, small business Michael lending. That's been the Chamber's job almost entirely. Merge now, we have a new interest in both sides of that coin. And again, your funding is primarily on the attraction side, but with your private-sector partners. And now with 1,500 or so small businesses, we can indeed focus more on improving the lives of small business. It's not lost on us that these big companies coming to town are going to need local supply chain vendors, construction companies, plumbers, electricians, drywaders, suppliers, retail, housing, rental housing. So, now, for the first time, as an executive staff, we get to focus on both sides of that. We've never really been in a position to do that.
Maybe I can add that, very great answer Supervisor Scott, members of the Board. We needed to evolve from just pure recruiting. And at the end of the day, issues like childcare, the barriers of childcare become much more important to our economic health. So, a group like ours now is looking at this diversity of issues that feed into the Prosperity Initiative, and I'm going to have Judy talk about it. One of the issues that we identified before the merger was we have a critical, absolutely alarming shortage of physicians in this community. The old Sun Corridor could not have addressed that. The new Chamber is. And I'm going to let Judy talk about that, because it's something that keeps me up at night, and I'm glad we're addressing it.
Supervisor Allen, when I hear you go through that quality-of-life list and listening to all the goals of Pima County, I am very challenged to understand how we take on such a huge challenge in this community for quality of life, for higher wages, better housing. My subcommittee right now is working on how do we get more doctors here? And every time we have to recruit anyone to our county, to our region, it's always about jobs, trailing spouses, education, and healthcare. So, to Joe's point and Fletcher's point, I think we have a really good muscle now with our merged organization to not leave any unanswered questions on the table and to really dig in. We have a whole army of people we didn't have before, before we were merged.
Thank you. Supervisor Allen.
So, we have a long history, and it's an acclaimed history, of land preservation, conservation, and now staff are involved in developing a comprehensive climate action plan. And, you know, they're thinking about the land conservation piece of this Norin Desert Conservation Plan, nationally awarded and recognized. These are some of the, our land, our water, our air are some of the things that define us, right, from our national parks that border the valley and then extend beyond through our other national monuments, et cetera. How do those values of conservation and protection of these important places, including preserving our water, for generations to come, right? How do those infuse into the attraction of industry and business here?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Allen, it's a great question. You know, we are cautious. We don't want the assets that got us here to disappear. But we do respond to the market. The market will tell us what they're looking for, which industries are, we don't actually get to go cherry-pick industries. There's industries that are a good fit for us, and based on our skill set of our employees, I would just say this. What we are very, and it's very important that we have discussions and we work so closely with Jan and the team, is we have a pretty good sense of which industries are off limits. So, an industry might come and find us and say, we'd like to set up shop, but if they, if they're not a good fit, we might head it off the pass. And I'll give you a great example that maybe is not so much on the environmental side. We actually manage the foreign trade zone for Pima County. And it's a federal program. It's all about tariff relief that companies can apply to reduce their tariffs. Very important now with what's going on in Washington. Well, we sat down with the county very early and said, what do we need to do? Because part of the foreign trade zone can be a reclassification of property tax. Okay? So, and what we found very early, the county said, here's the deal. We're not going to give any, let the school districts take any hits on property tax. So, we'll be very honest as the administrator of that foreign trade zone to say, it's off the table. Don't even ask. So, we have some latitude with that. The other thing is, you know, we're not in the business of fighting the environmental plan. We have a blueprint that was designed that had input from over 6,000 people. We had Carolyn Campbell be a part of that. We had the environmental groups. It does take an entire community, and we've got to balance our values as a community. We're not the ones to say what's good or not bad necessarily, but I think we have a pretty good sense of what doesn't land here and what does. Ultimately, that's your decision, though, to decide if it's a good fit. You know, we're going to bring opportunities, but we try not to bring opportunities that we feel are going to fail immediately based on the values of this community. I hope that answers it.
Supervisor Allen.
Yeah, you want to?
I would just mention and direct you to the current pipeline report that's in the most recent quarterly report. If you look at those, you'll see sustainable manufacturing, sustainable energy. We understand the region. We understand the resources. Project Blue is water-positive. It's the only time any of us have seen a data center that can actually replenish water. They chose to come to Tucson because of how we view the environment. They could go to Phoenix and not have to be water-positive. They could go to a lot of places and not even worry about building a pipeline from one end of this county to another just to attract reclaimed water. So, I think we can deliberately strategize- So I think we can deliberately strategize with you on things that create sustainable use of our resources. At this level, you participate. Your chairman participates with us in what we call the chairman's circle. So Chairman Scott has a seat at the same table that I do. He sees deals very early, and all he's got to do is say, we're not going to support them. I think it's important to understand, you have a very different voice with us than any other jurisdiction in the region.
Supervisor Allen?
Chair Scott?
Supervisor Conno, give me just a second because Supervisor Allen had some follow-up questions, and then I'll call on you next, sir.
So how will we handle, because Chairman Scott is one vote among several on the chairman's circle. So how do we handle conflicts? So as I spent some time reading through the Thrive in Tucson website, there is a significant emphasis on mining. We just passed a resolution a couple of weeks ago calling on the protection of Ironwood National Monument, which is now under threat from shrinkage and with the shrinkage due to interests in expanding mining operations into some of those lands. So how do those conflicts, which will be, which are, you know, bound to happen around our priorities versus some of those that I've seen touted on the webpage?
I can't imagine we would ever bring a mine to this board. However, Caterpillar is based here. Hexagon Mining is based here. Axis Catus, which is an engineering firm that relocated here from Calcutta. There's a lot of intellectual property in this community building new mining technology. Caterpillar here is 100% focused on autonomous vehicles, creating sustainable mining. The University of Arizona just identified their four top priorities under the new leadership of President Garamella. Mining is among them. Space and defense, AI, healthcare, and fusion, another possibly very controversial topic. I think there's a way all of us coalesce around things that make mining appealing but don't necessarily need to build a mine. We've recognized that on this board for 20 years. So you're not going to see us, you know, bringing a mine to you. I think there's a lot of mining tech, however, that's interesting to us. And Caterpillar's been the base for that. Most people were shocked that they would locate in a county that is so anti-mining. But it's because of the resources that are available to them and the fact that they have a training facility a few miles south of us to demonstrate this new technology. I think that's another reason it's important for you to have a voice. We don't vote in that meeting. There's no majority sends something. If any of us believe something's unaligned, we can stop it. And I think Joe's right. We know intimately what you're looking for, what the region's looking for, and we've got plenty to choose from. Phoenix has 110 data centers. We'll never want to be there. But can we support two or three or four with sustainable energy and sustainable water?
Supervisor Allen?
Last question.
You're fine.
So it's about the use of NDAs. And, you know, it has risen to the surface. I wasn't aware of the commonplace-ness of them within economic development, and it hinders, or they can, and depending upon the scope of the NDA, can hinder me as a supervisor to be able to make good decisions that reflect the interests of my constituents, who I'm sworn to represent, and the interests of Pima County as in the complexity of the needs and realities of the county. So there was some language within the contract about information being shared with us as, you know, as it could be, given the use of NDAs. If you all sign an NDA, I'm just wondering how it is that, how do we negotiate that of the transparency of information such that we get the information that we need in order to be responsible, transparent, and accountable to our constituents?
Sure. Absolutely. And let me interject before you answer, Ms. Rich, because I think that's a question from Supervisor Allen that I'd also like to have staff respond to because my understanding is that there's dialogue between the Chamber of Southern Arizona and staff anytime an NDA is proposed. So I'm going to ask staff to also respond to your question, if that's okay. Ms. Rich?
Well, I might want to wait until after staff answers this, but I'm going to tell you this, Supervisor Allen. When I became involved with Sun Corridor, coming from healthcare where we have HIPAA laws about strict, strict, strict confidentiality, about ever sharing anything, I was extremely impressed with how effective the confidentiality is in the process through the use of NDAs. And Joe taught me very early that nothing can leak because we can give you story after story about something that went bad because it leaked. So I recognize and respect the need for NDAs, but I also believe that there's never a reason why we wouldn't, under the strictest confidentiality, make sure that the right people here were in the loop.
Thank you. Ms. Lesher, could you respond to that or anyone you may choose to designate?
Excuse me. Thank you, Chair Scott. I'm going to ask Mr. DeBonus or Mr. Viscovi Kiori. Carmen, you want to give it a shout?
Thank you.
Chair Scott, and Joe, if you can step aside so I can see you both, Supervisor. Sorry about that.
No, big for me.
No, that's okay. So the county enters into nondisclosure agreements, and I know that that has caused a lot of discussion and led to some agenda items that we're going to hear from the board on today and understand that there's opportunity to go ahead and refine our process and improve our process. I will say that entering into a nondisclosure agreement doesn't prevent us from talking to other partner agencies and jurisdictions, right? In the case of Project Blue, others have entered into nondisclosure agreements with that entity. And so we talk with the Chamber of Southern Arizona. We work closely with them. We work with the City of Tucson and their Economic Initiatives Office. They also entered into a nondisclosure agreement. So it doesn't preclude us talking to other agencies and jurisdictions that also have entered into those agreements. We work with Pima Community College. We work with the University of Arizona. In this instance, we work with Tucson Water, which is a municipally operated utility, but we also worked with Tucson Electric Power. And so I think that the presence of the nondisclosure agreement in the case of this recent project has led people to believe that information was not provided from which the county or others could make decisions. And I understand that certain details were not disclosed. And I will indicate to you that in some of our past initiatives, as we approached bringing actions for board consideration with the client, with the business prospect, the decision was made to release information so that those details were available to the board. In this particular instance, working with this client, they uniquely had indicated that they were concerned that it would disclose proprietary operations that would lead to the ultimate identification of the user on the site. And so I understand that we need to do better in this area, but as has been said, the use of nondisclosure agreements in the economic development world are common. It doesn't mean that we necessarily need to conform. If folks know upfront what our expectations are and how we're going to seek to have information provided and distributed, they can come into that eyes wide open. And so I think this is an important topic for us to refine. I think everyone here has a common goal. And as you mentioned, Supervisor Allen tied directly to the Prosperity Initiative to increase economic stability and wealth in this community and investment in this community, job creation. We're all on the same page with that. It's that we need to smooth out some of the process in order for us to be able to do that comfortably and for you all to be able to respond to questions that you're receiving. So hope that adds some context to the county's role in that and how we work with others in this area of economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Debonus. Supervisor Conno, you had some other questions you wanted to ask? No? Okay. All right.
Chairman Scott, Supervisor Allen?
Mr. McCusker.
The NDA issue is our clients' wish. And it's not so much information as it is the identity of their target. They're in a very competitive environment. They move very stealthily, particularly in large data tech worlds. They do not want their name in the public domain. Makes it really hard for a government entity to approve something on a nameless basis. However, they've made it crystal clear to us that if our name gets out there, we're done. We are. So it's an all-or-nothing proposition with someone of that scale that says to us, don't let this get leaked. We can provide you the information, the scale, the scope, the jobs, the location. There were some things about this particular project that were so proprietary that they could be used to identify the end user, the amount of water, the months that they don't cool, other size and scope, energy consumption. They were concerned that that would allow a competitor to identify who it is. They want to be the first mover in this space, and they've made it crystal clear to us. And you have it on the agenda today, I think, you know, with legal's help. I just don't know how we cross that bridge without losing the client.
Thank you, Mr. McCusker. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to recommend approval of the contract with the Chamber of Southern Arizona for the period of July 2025 to June 30, 2026, in the amount of $550,000 as recommended by the county administrator.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. And I have some comments that I want to share with my colleagues. The county really is the region's leader in economic development. We've demonstrated that throughout our longstanding support of Sun Corridor International since its inception. I want to commend our staff, especially Mr. Viscovi Kiori, for the revisions to our economic development strategic plan, which was put together with a regional focus and is, by the way, attached to this contract that we're voting on. Because it was vetted by the Federal Economic Development Administration, it is going to have benefits not just to the county but also to the cities, the towns, the tribes. I watched during the time that I represented the county on the RTA Board, I watched county staff, especially Ms. Lesher and Mr. Debonus, lead this region to compromise, including giving up county projects so that we could move forward this most significant infrastructure decision for the entire region. The new contract and its emphasis on regional support, making sure that the cities, the towns, their chambers, their economic development officers have a seat at the table and that their voices are heard through ours. The merger of Sun Corridor International and the Tucson Metro Chamber strengthens our regional voice, and I feel that we need to stand by them at this critical stage. This merger has just happened. It was encouraged not only by people within our region but by our partners at both the state and federal level. And I also want to reassure my colleagues, as someone who has a seat on both the Board of Directors and the Executive Committee of that Board of Directors, that I'm always going to protect our interests as the county and that I'm also going to ensure that what is stated in this contract in terms of other regional voices being heard is always respected. So I appreciate that the motion was moved and seconded. Any comments or further discussion on the motion? Supervisor Allen?
So I would like to offer a substitute motion to reduce the contract amount to $300,000 and to shift the balance, the $250,000, to Pima County's Economic Development Department. And I suggest this for a number of reasons. I believe strongly that our greatest economic development assets, it's our community, and it is our lands. It's our air. It's our water. These are the things that define who we are, and their preservation intact over the long term of generations will continue to be our asset that plays out with ripple effects. And so I want to ensure, I want to invest in the county's Economic Development Department that is more tightly linked to the complexity of values of the county. I value the role of, you need a swishy symbol, formerly Sun Corridor, now Southern Arizona Chamber, and especially the fostering of growth and development of small businesses and that leadership. But I also want to make sure that our, especially at these moments, right, that our economic development efforts are strong and robust and can help drive forward the complexity of visions and value of Pima County. So that my substitute motion is to move forward with the contract, but at the reduced rate of $300,000.
And your motion also directs that the additional $250,000 go to the county's Economic Development Department?
Correct.
All right. So they're seconded to that motion?
Yes, I seconded it already, Chair Scott.
Oh, thank you, Supervisor Conno. Motion is moved and seconded. I'm not going to be able to support it. I want to draw my colleagues' comments to, I want to draw my colleagues' attention to the comments by the county administrator when she made the recommendation. I'm happy to talk about reductions in our level of support to the Chamber of Southern Arizona when we take up another contract at this point next year. But I think at this late stage in the game, given not just the recommendation from the county administrator, but also the discussions that she and staff have been having leading into that recommendation with the Chamber and its representatives, I think we are going to be demonstrating ourselves as good partners, especially at this crucial stage in the new organization's development if we stick with the original recommendation. So I'm not able to support the motion, but let's do a, unless there's further discussion, let's do a roll-call vote on Supervisor Allen's motion.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Conno? Supervisor Christie? Chair Scott?
No. All right. So we will go back then to...
No, Chair Scott?
Yes.
Actually, it's a tie vote, and due to the tie vote, it results in postponement of consideration of this item until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be July 15.
Okay. So that also has the same effect, Ms. Manriquez, on my original motion?
Chair Scott, I believe so, but we can ask legal counsel.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Chair Scott, can you repeat the sequence of events? I was having a hard time following.
That's okay. I made a motion to approve the contract at the level recommended by the county administrator. Supervisor Allen made a substitute motion to reduce that amount to $300,000 and to send the balance to the Economic Development Department. That motion resulted in a tie vote, so our question to you is, is the whole item moved forward to the 15th, or do we also do a vote on my motion, which has not been voted upon?
I believe we revert to your motion, Chair Scott.
Okay. All right. So thank you, Mr. Brown. So we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the contract with the Chamber of Southern Arizona for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, in the amount of $550,000. We'll also do a roll call vote on that motion, Ms. Manriquez.
Okay, this is a roll call on the original motion for approval.
Supervisor Allen?
No.
Supervisor Conno?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Chair Scott?
Yes. All right, according to the rules of the board, because there is a tie vote, this item moves forward to our next scheduled meeting, which is July 15. All right. Thank you all very much for being here and thank you to staff as well. All right. I know that a couple of our members who are participating remotely are under kind of a time crunch. So you'll be pleased to know that I think I have a way of bundling some of our, hopefully, we'll find out, less controversial items. So let's do this. Let's go first to item number seven, which is where we are sitting as the Stadium District Board. And this is increasing the amount for security services. And this is because of the new agreement with a professional Mexican baseball team for their scheduled events at the complex. I will move item number seven.
I pity the fool who doesn't second it.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen, very enthusiastically. All right. Discussion?
It's the eighteenth.
Yes, Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I have a question. The increase of the security cost of that increase, is there any anticipated revenue that will offset this expense?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, the easy answer is yes. We can, we're happy to provide additional breakdown of how much is coming from the contract and projected revenues that are coming from audience attendance and things like that. But we do absolutely believe that this will, that we will be seeing revenues to offset it. We can follow up with some additional granularity.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of item number seven indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, that item passes four zero. Okay, now we are sitting as the Board of Supervisors. And I'm going to move items number eight and nine. This is approval of the consent calendar and the amended Board of Supervisors meeting schedule.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion on items eight and nine.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to poll on the consent, item number three.
Okay. We will poll item number three on the consent calendar. So I will amend my motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number three. Is that okay with you Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, so approving item number eight with the exception of item three and item number nine. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, those pass four zero. Now we're going to go to the consent calendar, item number three, which is under the recorder pursuant to resolution number 1993-200, ratification of the document storage and retrieval fund for the entire fiscal year 2024 and July through May fiscal year 2025. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion Supervisor Christie.
Mr. Chair, this is a troubling element right here. We have basically, going back to July of 2023, the document and storage, document storage and retrieval funds of the county recorder's office has not been submitted or balanced since that time. So we've got virtually two complete fiscal years of no reporting of this income. It's kind of equates to that balancing your own checkbook for two years. This really shouldn't be on the consent agenda. It should be on the regular agenda from now on and on. But, you know, after two years, why now is this being presented? And if you look at the ongoing fund balances, they have decreased by over a million dollars. Excuse me. Yeah, over a million dollars. And this is after the county recorder waived roughly a half a million dollars in potential revenue. And two years of declining revenues with no explanation attached other than they were impacted by high volume election cycles. Well, this goes back to 1993, when this was pursuant to Pima County, to a Pima County resolution that this item be reported. So I'm certain that the county recorder's predecessor had high volume election cycles and, as stated in the backup, inconsistent housing market trends. What has that got to do with balancing the equivalent of a checkbook for two full years? And I'm wondering why we have such a market declining balance after two years? Why it's being reported and submitted now? And why hasn't this been addressed within the last two years? And does this have any ramifications vis a vis the Auditor General?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, and members of the board, I did meet with the recorder. This is a requirement that these reports come regularly to the board. So we have the full transparency and understand whenever fluctuations there may be. I can assure you that as of this point in time, this has been fully scrubbed, reviewed, audited. And I know that the number that you now have showing in these reflected reports through May is accurate and does accurately reflect all of the activity that occurred in the last two years. And the recorder is very much aware that, following receipt today of this report by the board, that the regular and ongoing reports will be submitted to the board for your, for the review. And again, to ensure the transparency. But where you are now and the numbers that you've seen have been fully audited and vetted.
And this, Mr. Chair, Ms. Lesher, this in no way could be characterized as sound financial reporting for two years, could it?
Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, I think that the desire from all is that you do receive the regular reports. And that while I believe that the auditing and the review of the fund continued, it was not the reporting out that occurred. And I think that that is what we all look forward to in appropriate audit and accounting principles, that there's that checks and balance and an additional set of eyes that will be coming to the board in the future.
Well, it should have been coming to the board for the last two years, and it didn't. And I'm disappointed that there is no accompanying explanation as to why this has been lingering for so long and incomplete for so long and that we have a million dollars in revenue that has decreased from its original inception. I'm hoping that there'll be some sort of request from the recorder's office that we could have an explanation as to why she waited so long and why there's a million dollars in lost revenue over the two-year period. And are we going to get in trouble with the Auditor General on this? So obviously, it's not something that could be answered at this time because it wasn't answered in the middle of this item. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Lesher.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Conno?
Thank you, Chair Scott. I'd like to move item number three on the consent calendar for approval.
It was already moved and seconded Supervisor. But we were just responding to Supervisor Christie's questions. I moved it and Supervisor Allen seconded.
Can we call the question?
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Conno's called the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes four zero. All right. We're now going to go to item number 11. This is outside agency committee funding recommendations for fiscal year 2025, 2026. I'd like to move item number 11, but remove at the recommendation of administration the $47,292 for ISDA. That's the International Sonoran Desert Alliance, Ajo Las Artist, under the youth, young adults and family support category. That money would go back to the general fund. So that would be my motion for item 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Ms. Lesher. Could we just hear a little bit about why that was the recommendation of staff?
Happy to. And Mr. Sullivan is here, Mr. Chair, to talk about the overall process related to these outside agency funds. But regarding the one particular request that we've just made to reallocate the $47,000 and change, we have a long history of a partnership with ISDA in Ajo. They do an extraordinary job serving the people of Ajo. We have multiple contracts with ISDA from different departments. And what you approved earlier this month or last month in the budget included a direct allocation to ISDA out of the general fund, equivalent to the amount that they receive from all these different grants, so that there's an ease of reporting and an ability for a small organization such as ISDA to continue to do the work that they need to work on behalf of the community and not worry about some of the nuances of a multitude of contracts. So this does not decrease the amount that ISDA is receiving. But we recognize that this process with the outside agencies was moving on one track while we were, at the same time, moving to the board with the budget request to reallocate that contract with ISDA. This money going back into the general fund and CWD allows, will continue to pay, in order to the benefit of ISDA, but simply through a different contractual obligation.
Thank you, Ms. Lesher. And before I call on Mr. Sullivan, Supervisor Allen, I know you and your team have been working on this. Anything that you wanted to add to the administrators' comments? All right. Thank you Supervisor. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair Scott, members of the board, Administrator Lesher. Yes, so this is a two-year continuation of the outside agency program. So in the second year, we take the total amount that agencies requested in the first year and then look at how spending rates have gone and move funds around based on that. So the outside agency committee makes these recommendations after they've moved everything around and moves it on to the Board of Supervisors. And I'm also very pleased to announce that we are moving the outside agency process to align with the prosperity initiative. So we've had Helen and Nicole Fife and our outside agency folks working on a way to join those processes together.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Supervisor Conno?
Thank you, Chair Scott. Has the item been moved? I have some comments.
Yeah, it has been moved and seconded as amended. But you certainly can make some comments.
Got it. Well, thank you, Chair Scott. I really want to send my appreciation to Administrator Lesher and Director Sullivan and the entire outside agency citizen review committee members. I think it's really important that we honor the, this is the citizen review committee that I believe has one of the greatest responsibilities countywide, looking at the tremendous need in our community, combing through all of these applications and recognizing that our resources are limited. I just want to thank Anita, Victor, Trish, Janine, Jess, and especially Rosalba Bullock, who will be stepping down in the next couple of months, but has served the people of District Five on the outside agency citizen review committee for many, many, many years. So I'm delighted that the county continues to play a key role in funding nonprofit community agencies that collaborate with the county and just want to extend my appreciation to all of those involved. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Any further comments or questions from board members? All those in favor of item number 11 as amended indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That item passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. All right. I believe I have a way of bundling some of our items, but I'm not going to do them en masse because I think that sometimes causes confusion. But, you know, you try to learn from your experiences. So I'm going back to what happened at the last meeting. But, so I'm going to do this in groups of five. But I would like to move for approval items 12, 13, 16, 17, and 20.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Conno. Any discussion?
Could I have those numbers one more time, please?
Yeah, you certainly can Supervisor. 12, 13, 16, 17, and 20.
May I make a substitute motion?
You may.
That we include 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 32. Let's just go to 31.
We've already done 31.
We've already done 31, so we go to 30.
So did the clerk get all those? Ms. Manriquez, could you read that motion back, please, with Supervisor Christie's amendments?
Okay, so this is approval of items number 12, 13, 16, 17, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30.
All right. And that...
I need a second to the substitution.
Supervisor Allen, are you okay with amending that as a second? Yes. All right. Supervisor Conno, did you have a question? No? Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that is approved. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead Supervisor.
May I make a motion that we approve items 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48?
Supervisor, it's like you were sitting on my shoulder when I was preparing for this meeting. I will second your motion.
Well, wear a bowtie so we can tell the difference.
Do you need me to read those?
And Ms. Manriquez will read those for us.
Okay, so this, the motion is to approve number 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, as amended, because we amended the contract amount. 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48.
Correct.
All right. All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, discussion. Supervisor Allen?
I just want to note, so item 48.
Yes ma'am.
This is the acceptance of a grant to the Sheriff's Department for our high intensity drug trafficking area designation. You know, in years past, these HITA designations are things that I worked on and out of concern for the kind of blurring of lines that can happen through those investments of local law enforcement and military agencies. So I'll just say, it's an item that gives me some trepidation. So I'll just say it's an item that gives me some trepidation, and I will be talking more with the sheriff about it.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions or comments? All those--
One quick question--
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
If someone can answer it or get back to me on 37, the contract procurement for pharmaceuticals. If I could get some kind of a description of what those pharmaceuticals entail, what they are, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor. Ms. Lesher noted that.
Happy to, thank you.
All right. All those in favor of approving those items indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, those items are approved. So I think I've got this right, that we're now on item 14, because we didn't do that one, correct? All right, so item 14 is Metropolitan Tucson Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm going to go ahead and move both item 14 and 15.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Kano. And Supervisor Kano, did you want to make some comments or ask a question?
Yes, Chair Scott. I wanted to thank our Board of Supervisors for appointing me to serve with Visit Tucson. And more importantly, as it relates to items 14 and 15, just want to thank the county administrator for some of the recommendations in item number 15 to provide more resources to Visit Tucson from the general fund. As the public may or may not know, this particular line item is made possible by bed taxes. And I've just been so impressed with the economic development priorities of Visit Tucson, their connection and commitment to local priorities and local entrepreneurs and businesses. Really is refreshing to see their work grow. And for so many of, as I've said before, the Pima County landmarks being in District 5, Chair Scott. Look forward to supporting the item. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments or questions on items 14 and 15? All those in favor of those two items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes four zero. We're now going to take up item number 19. This is $320,000 in revenue from the city of Tucson to provide for the Pima Early Education Program scholarships. Extend the contract term to September 1 of 2026 and amend contractual language. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes, I'd be interested in finding out what the city of Tucson's initial contribution was to this program. It looks like, if memory serves me, there was a million dollars contribution by the city that then was reduced to $750,000, then was reduced even further to $320,000, and now down to zero. What, I'm sorry?
Supervisor Christie, I believe your recollection is correct, except for the last part. The 320--
I should say that-- Go ahead.
The $320,000 is what is going into the program for the coming academic year. There's--
Yeah.
There was a recommendation from the city manager that there be zero support, but mayor and council acted to provide the $320,000 that is on our agenda. Is that correct, Ms. Lesher?
Yes.
Ms. Lesher is indicating that is correct.
And that is what I have in my notes, too. But I did recall that there was discussion that it was going to eventually be discussed to be moved down to zero. Be that as it may, what's Pima County going to do to make up this lost revenue? And is there plans to make up the lost revenue by raising the library district tax rate again?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, we can get you some granularity of exactly what we're doing and how we're moving the funds. Some of the discussion has been, initially, when the city was looking to go to zero, there were a couple of classes in the Sunnyside and Amphi area that we were going to have to eliminate. With the $320,000 that's come in as well, we're able to work with the PEAPs program to see if we can adjust class sizes and make some modifications so that those classes will continue. Mr. Holmes, is there additional information?
Chair Scott, Administrator Lesher, Supervisor Christie, right now, there are 46 less scholarships available across-- that will get reallocated to make up that difference. At this point, that's the strategy that's in place, to reallocate the individual scholarships to the school districts. But in terms of how we're going to fund the remaining dollar amount, that's still yet to be continued discussions over the course of the next year.
And if, Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, the DQ increase funding from the city is not a delta that we are currently looking to fill from the county. Our commitment remains at the $10 million rate. This is simply reallocating programs, students that will not be getting the scholarship or will only be, will be providing up to the $320,000 rate.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Lesher is raising the library district tax rate on the table?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, no.
Thank you, Ms. Lesher. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Chair Scott.
Supervisor Kano.
Thank you, Chair Scott. This might be the second meeting that I have made this request. And perhaps I'm even recalling that this is the third time that I've asked for something in writing from the administrator's office that tells us a bit more about the holistic plan for PEAPs. And I'm deeply concerned that we have not yet received a plan that would allow us to hold kids harmless in this situation where we've got a $400,000 difference from the city of Tucson. I really could care less what's coming in. I want to know that we're investing in our kids and their futures and their hopes and their potentials. And I would like for us to figure out if there are any available one-time grant contingency funds to not disproportionately hurt kids and families in District 5, because adjustments is another word for cuts. And I guarantee you that a lot of those cuts, those adjustments, are in District 5. So I'd like some more clarity from the administration on how we are going to hold kids harmless, and I'd like a memo in the next two weeks, please.
Thank you, Supervisor. Administrator Lesher is making note of that. Any comments for now, or are we just going to wait until we have the report the Supervisor requested? All right, very good. Right, all those in favor of approving item number 19 indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item passes three zero because Supervisor Allen needed to step away from the dais. We're now going to go to item number 32. This is under facilities management. This is city of Tucson to provide for the termination of the lease agreement for the TPD office within the Children's Advocacy Center of Southern Arizona. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Just curious about two things. This is a 25-year lease that started in 2008. I'm wondering the cause of the termination, why we're terminating it? And is the city of Tucson current on its lease payments?
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Deputy County Administrator Holmes.
Mr. Holmes. Yes, Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie. This is not a termination of this lease. This is a space that TPD would use in the Children's Advocacy Center. They no longer need that space. They would use it to come and go as they were used by the advocacy center for particular cases that they were investigating. They will continue to support the Children's Advocacy Center, but they do not need that actual space. It could get, continue to be reallocated. But there's no implications on the full lease that continues to be part of this agreement.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm confused because in the item it says, "Provide for the termination of the lease agreement for the TPD office." And then, Mr. Holmes, if I'm incorrect, correct me, but you just said that this is not a termination of the lease?
Mr. Holmes.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, this terminates the lease agreement with TPD. TPD did not pay any revenue to this lease agreement. They were merely using the space. So this termination agreement just repurposes that space, which was part of an original agreement with them.
And, Mr. Holmes, just to follow up-- just to follow up, TPD still has a relationship with the Children's Advocacy Center, as does the Pima County Sheriff's Department. They're just not using this space that they were leasing.
Chair Scott, that is correct.
All right. Supervisor Christie, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Thank you. In the background, though, it states that the lease for its 25 years would generate $189,000. So there is a dollar amount in the lease. Granted, it may be not used by TPD, but it's through the city of Tucson, as is TPD. So I'm curious, is this lease still in effect to the tune of an amount to be received at the termination of it of $189,000?
Administrator Lesher, Mr. Holmes.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, if you look at page two of that document, the lease still is $189,000. This removes TPD from the use of that premises.
So the city of Tucson is still going to lease it?
Supervisor-- Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, that's correct. $189 continues to be part of the lease. That's just the use of that particular space is not, is going to be occupied by a different tenant in the future.
A different tenant than what the lease terms call for? City of Tucson, right? They can use it however they want, I'm sure, but it's still with the city of Tucson.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, as stated in the program goes, a recovered space can be reallocated to another agency or organization within the Children's Advocacy Center, as per stated in this agreement.
And if I may, Chair Scott--
Please.
Supervisor Christie, I think this is a lease with TPD for 500 square feet on the second floor of the building. It is, the lease remains with, and we continue to work with the Children's, I'm sure, Children's Advocacy Center of Southern Arizona and the entire facility. This was a small office suite that was being used by TPD. The more robust relationship with both Children's Advocacy Center and the city can continue, just not that one space for TPD. And my apologies if we're not providing clarity on this.
I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of approving this item, please indicate by saying aye. This is item number 32.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes four zero. All right. Ms. Manriquez will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're on the hearings. Thank you. We have three hearings for liquor licenses. I don't believe that anybody is here to speak to those items. These are items 49, 50, and 51. So I'm going to move to close all three of those hearings and approve all three of those licenses.
Second.
Moved and seconded by--
Second.
Supervisor Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor of items 49, 50, and 51 indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items pass four zero. Okay, we're now at item number 52. This is a hearing for a concurrent comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. I know that we have somebody who is participating remotely, but only if the board has questions, correct? They never connected. Okay. And I don't believe we have any other speakers lined up. So I will move to close the public hearing and recommend approval subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes four zero. We had already done 53, 54, 55, 56, and 57. So we are now, holy cow, we're now back on the addendum. And just because I feel like items one and two are going to command most of our time and attention with due cause, I'm going to move items three and six, because we already did four and five. So I will move items three and six on the addendum.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Any discussion on either three or six? All those in favor of those two items indicate by saying aye.
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 Those two items are opposed, are passed by vote of four zero. And so the only two items we have left were put on the addendum by Supervisor Allen. Addendum item one is environmental impact reviews. I'll turn it over to Supervisor Allen.
So, after a lot of the conversation around Project Blue and the decisions, you know, I think one, upon reflection, one of the difficulties or challenges was that we receive economic analysis, right, from the number of jobs created directly and indirect, wages, investment numbers. But what we don't receive through economic development projects is an analysis of the environmental impacts. Again, sort of referencing earlier comments about that our, our community, our water, our air, our land is so critical to economic development. And so I think having an understanding when we are given the opportunity to consider economic development projects, that we should also receive some analysis of what the impact will be on water, on energy, on air, on land. So this is simply a proposal to create a policy that the administration and staff work to create a policy that will integrate and define exactly how this would work, an environmental impact kind of analysis, a review, that would correspond with and be combined with perhaps the economic analysis of proposed economic development projects.
Thank you, Supervisor Allen.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that taking any action on both or either of these measures at this time could be seen as an attempt to influence or prejudice the deliberations of the mayor and council on a matter coming before them and would be tantamount to exposing the Board of Supervisors in Pima County to potential litigation.
So--
And that we table this, these items until the second meeting in September to prevent any kind of, an attempt to influence or prejudice the deliberations of the mayor and council. And that we table these items until the second meeting in September.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, that motion dies for lack of a second. I had a few questions about this item that I wanted to direct two of them to staff and then one of them to my colleague from District 3. I'll ask the first question to Supervisor Allen. In your item, it says, "The proposed policy should define-- this is the last sentence of the item. The proposed policy should define triggers for the completion of an environmental impact review, as well as who conducts the analysis." Could you let me know what is meant by triggers?
My thinking is that not all projects would require an environmental impact analysis.
Okay.
Right? And so is it, so the question is, that I think would be defined in the policy, is that-- that, you know, is there a scope and scale at which an environmental impact analysis would be necessary, and a scope and scale in which it's not necessary? And so that's what kind of the trigger language refers to.
That is helpful. Thank you, Supervisor. And then, also had a couple of questions for staff. When departments that deal with environmental concerns weigh in now on development projects, when does that typically happen, and how would this item change or enhance their work? Ms. Lesher.
Chair Scott, and I will let Mr. DeBonis and Mr., let everyone speak on this in a moment, but...
The super directors?
Yeah. I think, I think what this will do is divine a very clear policy and a process, and that while we work with the other departments and are asking for feedback, what this will end up doing is provide a very specific roadmap, so that all the departments see when and if they can, you know, how they can, how they can speak, how can they make sure that their comments are reflected, and just more formalize what might be an informal process. But, Mr. DeBonis?
Thank you, Chair Scott, and board members. As I mentioned earlier, so when these economic development projects come through, and our economic development team is working on it, there is continual engagement with county staff, as well as other agency partners and jurisdictional partners. And so in each instance, our economic development team will be working with departments, and those are regulatory departments, permitting departments, infrastructure departments. So there is an ongoing dialogue that happens back and forth, and Mr. Viskovic Quiorti can talk about it in, you know, greater context if the board wishes. And so I think what this does here is it formalizes a process that says, much like Supervisor Allen indicated, along with information that comes to the board, there will be economic analysis, but there'll be this environmental review. And so it's not that those conversations aren't happening with county agencies right now. It will bring that forward. And what I would envision is a structure similar to what we do for reviewing environmental aspects of private rezoning properties, right? There could be potentially a questionnaire that we develop that we give to business prospects and say, hey, complete this with this information. And then with that, we route it for internal review by the departments and get formal agency responses. A lot of the interaction that happens today is via verbal dialogue that takes place. There's email correspondence that goes back and forth. But in the end, right, what we're hearing from the board is that there should be a formalized document presented back to you that says, here's what was looked at, here's the details of each of these aspects, and the input from the various departments. So I'm going to let Mr. Viskovic Quiorti add anything additional.
Thank you, Mr. DeBonis. Chair Scott, Vice Chair Allen, thank you very much for the question. So much like Mr. DeBonis said, we do engage with every one of these regulatory departments quite literally from day one. Sometimes these projects come into us at various stages, right? But really, one of the things, and I can attest to this through DEQ and working with Scott DeBias, is that the earlier that we connect with that department, the better, right? And that actually goes for all departments, because there is a little bit of a time perspective, right, that you have to go through these different information gathering and regulatory processes that exist to go through and get these different permits, public hearings, all the things that are required through established policies and procedures that we have on the county side right now. If what I'm hearing is correct, a formalized policy or presentation of that policy, and really what that process looks like, is something that we certainly can iron out, and I think would be advantageous. And I think if we discuss what the specific components of an economic, or sorry, I always say economic, environmental impact review might look like, we can develop that along the way as well. So something that we can certainly start looking into as soon as it makes the most sense and is directed by the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And a follow-up question.
Chair Scott.
Go ahead, Supervisor Kano.
All right, you can finish your question, Chair, and then I'll go after.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that. The follow-up question was this. The item says that the environmental impact review should be made available to the public along with economic analysis of the project's impacts. My question is, who did the economic benefit analysis for Project Blue, and how was county staff involved with doing that economic benefit analysis?
Chair Scott, Vice Chair Allen, thank you very much for the question. So the actual analysis itself was done by Applied Economics, Sarah Merly specifically. The inputs were provided by the Chamber of Southern Arizona in conjunction with the project, with Beal Infrastructure. There's a model developed that is used by Applied Economics for specific types of projects, whether it's manufacturing, technology campuses, whatever type of industry it may or may not be. Those inputs are then put into that model. That model then comes out with that economic impact analysis.
So with this new policy, as it, well, the recommendations that come to the board in September, the environmental impact reviews are to be done by staff. There would still be the ability for outside entities like Applied Economics to weigh in on the economic benefits analysis, and there, but there could be staff input. I know it's very project-specific.
Chair Scott, Vice Chair Allen, yes, effectively. So if there's a level of analysis that we can do on the environmental side, right, through all of our departments, and probably likely in conjunction with the city of Tucson and utility providers through them, we can do that. It would not take away the opportunity for us to work with a third-party entity to do an economic impact analysis as well.
Got it.
And then whatever that alignment looks like, we can figure out exactly how we communicate that. I will make one quick point. Coming out of the gate right now, I can't necessarily say that we can make all of it public. This touches on the non-disclosure agreement component that we'll chat on in a brief moment. And so I think those will end up kind of having to be developed contemporaneously for to achieve the goals that are put forward by this board.
Thank you. Supervisor Kano.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Actually, your question was exactly where I was headed. Thanks.
All right. Very good. Supervisor Allen, didn't know if you had any other comments, or if you wanted to move the item.
No other comments, and yes, I would move that we...
Oh.
I would move that we approve the environmental impact reviews policy.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of... Oh, Supervisor Kano, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I just want to thank my colleague from District 3 for bringing this item forward. I think the process is definitely one that we have to look at, so that we can ensure that the public trust is upheld in future discussions related to economic development projects. The only thing that I ask staff to be mindful of, too, is trying to figure out how we are going to be working with private partners like the Chamber in making this happen. I think that's kind of the, that's the unusual situation that has happened in the last couple of weeks, is that we did not control the data. It was a, it was a private entity. And so that ambiguity, I think, is going to be really, is going to be really important for us to look at. So I look forward to supporting the policy, and same with the county administrator says in the report on September 2.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments or questions from board members? All those in favor of addendum item 1 indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3 to 1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. We're now on to addendum item number 2, and again, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Allen.
Yes, so item number 2 is the use of non-disclosure agreements, or NDAs, in economic development projects policy. So the proposal is that we direct to the county administrator in working with the Pima County Attorney's Office to present to the board at the September 2 meeting, a policy regarding the use of NDAs in economic development projects. The proposed policy should include, but not be limited to, how the use of NDAs reflect Pima County's commitment to government transparency and provide sufficient and timely information that enables sound policymaking decisions, as well as robust public input. I think this is, again, an item in reflection to how the process around Project Blue and the, the use of NDAs, sort of feeling like, I think I've used this analogy now to many people, so part of the repetition, as being sort of a wrecking ball, as opposed to a scalpel. And what I hope that we can get to is that the use of NDAs are precise in determining the type of information that, that make it a make-or-break deal, but no more than that. And, and even in that, that we have a clear analysis that the, that the impact of that is, is, is not one that is sort of the detriment, right, of the overall good, or detriment to our ability as a board to make effective decisions for the county and for our constituents. So again, it is to give, pass the ball over to the administrator and, and staff to come back to us at the September 2 meeting with a proposed policy.
Would you like to move the, move the item?
I would move that we approve the use of non-disclosure agreements in economic development projects policy.
I'll second. Any further comments or discussion? So I'm waiting for the delay, but I don't think I had any from Supervisors Kano or Christie, so I'll just say this. Supervisor Allen and I voted differently on Project Blue, but I think we agree that we both would have benefited from having more information to weigh. And so that's why I'm supporting this item. But I want to ask this question of not just the county administrator, but also Mr. Brown, because we found out, well, we knew, before and after the Project Blue items, that the county attorney's office plays a significant role in putting together NDAs when they're requested. So I would just like to know, in general, I'm not asking you all to get into any specifics about the Project Blue NDAs, or really any specific NDA, but in general, how are NDAs drafted when they are requested? When the county is working with an outside entity and they request an NDA, how are they now drafted? Who's involved? And if you, as much as you can share about the process as it currently exists, and how this project, I'm sorry, this item might, might change things. So again, I direct that to both staff and to Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown.
Chair Scott, so we work with county administration and the contracting parties, or the development parties. Usually, it's under our template, our Business Transactions Unit, under Supervisor Bobby You. So because we want consistency, we promote our template, which we look at and we update, which we've looked at again over the past few weeks. And then if there's conflict as there is in any contract negotiations, we work out any details. So the end product is not always the same, but we try to start with our template every time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, Ms. Lesher, who would you like to respond on the part of staff?
And Chair Scott, your answer, the question, as I understand it, is asking how we might respond to the policy that we've not yet drafted or brought for your consideration.
No, it's how do we do it now?
No, 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 but I mean, it's very different now.
Okay.
Well, let me try. The vast majority of our use of the non-disclosure is run through the procurement department and deals with contracts.
Ah, okay.
You, we may, when we're dealing with Microsoft, or we're dealing with a company, one of our computer companies, you have on occasion received a confidential packet of information. Because when you are reviewing and evaluating those kinds of contracts, there's a variety of information that are proprietary to that organization. Some of the cost structure, and some of the healthcare pharmaceuticals, things like that. So I would say that most of the times you see our NDAs, they're run through Mr. Collins, the procurement department, with the specific department or agency making the purchase. I think what I have heard from Supervisor Allen, and the need to look at the scalpel, is there is a slight difference between when we're looking at the magnitude of a problem or a concern, like an economic development organization, where you're asked to bring a company in and evaluate the impact on the community, and the need for public information related to that, versus what the internal pricing structure might be within an organization with which you're going to contract to buy office supplies. And so that's, that's really the way we use them these days. As I say, the regular use and the vast majority of the use deals with the procurement of minor products. I see this as differentiating that, splitting it and figuring out a different way to, to find an analysis that allows us to provide for confidentiality in a public environment.
That still allows us to be competitive with other jurisdictions, because one of the things that I'm hopeful to hear from, from staff, not so much the county attorney, but from staff, is I, I agree with the intent of the item to provide more transparency to both the board and the public, but I realize that may also be a fine line in terms of putting Pima County in a position where we might lose out on opportunities, because we're asking things that perhaps other jurisdictions don't. So I realize that there's a fine line to walk there, and I don't know if that's something that either you or Mr. Viskovic Quiorti would like to expand on.
We do it every day. I think, I mean, I think what I'm looking at is, part of it is how we implement this will be what we discuss when we bring back the policy.
Okay.
The recognition that we need to look at confidential information to say is not, it is not unique to, to us, and I know that Mr. Viskovic Quiorti is looking at other jurisdictions already. Any governmental entity that deals with economic development opportunities like this has reviewed and scrubbed any number of ways in which we deal with that information. Whether we bring things into an executive session, also a concern, because that remains private as, private as well. But how we develop processes that allow for public involvement in public processes like this is something that we are, I know, as I say, we've, we've been looking at it. Mr. Viskovic Quiorti is also the incoming president of the Arizona Economic Development Association. I think I have the, I'm close to what the initials are. So we're working with our partners around the state and around the country to look at best practices and seeing what we can craft for this board.
Got it.
Anything else, sir?
Ms. Lesher, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kano.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I just want to echo some of the concerns that my colleague had from District 1, Chair Scott. What I don't want this policy to do is to hurt Pima County's economic advantage, and that is sometimes what could end up happening in these kinds of really targeted recruitments. And so I think for the administrator, really, to be looking at all options, and perhaps to not even come with a recommendation of go this lane or the other, I think what we want as a board is really just that robust input and best practices from throughout Arizona, and certainly throughout the nation, and see where we can do a better job at this. And I think that this is really where a lot of my concerns really come, is that, you know, the Pima County Board of Supervisors and all of our regionally elected jurisdictions who have jurisdiction over these issues, I think, have to have some level of engagement in here. We can't leave it to private entities to be making decisions that ultimately taxpayers are on the hook for. And that's where I think that the spirit of the motion is from District 3. So I'm looking forward to what you find out, Administrator Lesher, and want to just stress that this policy, my support of it, is contingent on it not hampering our economic development efforts as well.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments or questions from Supervisors? All right. The item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3 to 1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Ms. Manriquez will correct me, but I think we have covered both the agenda and the addendum, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.